I'm going to call this meeting back in session at 6:31 PM. We previously went to an executive session for the purposes of discussing negotiations with union personnel. Welcome back, everybody. All right, to begin this by saying pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No one person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. We're going to start, just for a quick agenda, we're going to start with public input, then have a student report, and then before we go to our regular presentation, we have a couple of very sizable donations that we would like to accept and honor some people. So, we're going to begin, if there's anybody that from the public that would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand or let me know. I do not see anybody. So, next we will move on, and we are honored to have Shivvi here today, finance reconned to give the student report. Shivvi.
Yeah, thank you so much. Hi, everybody. So, I'm just going to be talking a little bit about the events at the high school, as well as how the high school is tackling social justice due to recent events. So, again, just to kind of cover some stats, right now, basketball and swim are just two of many sports that are being held safely with COVID distancing rules. Girls' basketball stats right now are two to one, while boys are one to three. And swim is also doing well. They have a meet tonight with Hamilton Wenham where more stats will be finalized. Moving on to clubs and extracurriculars, many seniors have received their acceptance letters from colleges already, although those letters will continue coming in in the spring. In addition, we have many new clubs that have recently gotten off the ground. Teen Cure has already had a few meetings, and they received their first assignment or file for their cancer patient that they're putting together ideas for in order to create a care package to send to him. In addition, the social activism club had a successful first meeting this week with a great turnout, and the first event is underway, being done with the intention to honor Martin Luther King Jr. in Black History Month. International Club also went through a bit of a rebranding and has turned its focus to languages. They held a seminar to teach holiday-related foreign languages over winter break to younger students in elementary school levels. NRY4A, which is a youth organization in town, composed predominantly of high school students who overlap in many of the clubs I just mentioned, also designed and held a training on bias, privilege, and leadership for the Student Council's annual in-house training over break as well. Shifting gears to one of the more popular clubs, Interact has finished their neighborly notes and leafraking events, and they're moving forward with putting on a presentation on addiction partnered with other groups in town. Many students have also begun to think about their civil action project and are currently compiling their volunteer hours, especially by participating in volunteer-oriented clubs, before planning on writing their cumulative essay. Continuing on this topic of civic action and civic engagement, high school teachers in first block classes last week were able to facilitate long, in-depth conversation about the breach of the Capitol. Many classes discussed this topic, and teachers were careful to ensure that every student felt mentally and physically safe while also having meaningful and productive conversations about democracy and civic engagement. Some teachers also incorporated this topic into their lessons. For example, I think Mr. Dexter, an art teacher, had his students illustrate abstractly their feelings pertaining to the events of last week. Moving forward to some later topics, Ms. Nichols is being recognized by the Student Council as the Teacher of the Month for her hard work regarding the pandemic. Student Council is also working on their Book of Excellence, which has been adapted to a slideshow format for the NEMAS conference. And with regard to maskers, Notorious is currently filming their video submissions for New England Voices with the use of green screens and social distancing. Maskers is also rehearsing for their production of Everybody, and tech will start next week, while applications were just collected Thursday. Finally, there's also a new STEM course that is being opened to juniors and seniors, and it's an after-school program that's hoping to expand a little bit on career paths and career topics, and it's an eight-week program starting in a couple of weeks. That was just a bit of a rundown on what's going on. Normally, we do show student work, but because there are so many students here tonight, we figured we just focused a little bit more on how civic engagement is going on in the school.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? No? Okay. Shivvi, excellent, as always. I feel like you're a member of our committee now, so you can come, any meeting you'd like to come to. You always add to it, so thank you. Okay, and as I mentioned, we're going to do a little bit of a break here, because what some people might not understand if you don't, you know, suffer through the whole meeting that we have, at the very end, the school committee always accepts donations, and our community is incredibly generous. I mean, we, you know, every year, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars donated to the schools from various groups, many from the PTO, but we've really tried to emphasize on thanking the people that have made significant contributions to the schools, you know, in the last couple of years. And there are two groups that we really want to recognize and some donations that we want to accept at the beginning of the meeting. So, the first one, I believe we have Pastor Jonathan Del Turco. Pastor Del Turco, are you here?
I am, but I just lost the feed. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can, and I'm sorry I lost my video, but I am here.
Well, we appreciate you coming, and so I've been told by Mr. Connolly that Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Connolly, that we have a check from the International Church of North Reading for $40,000 being donated to the North Reading schools. Pastor Del Turco, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you. I'm so sorry I lost my video feed. I would have loved to do this in person, but thank you for hearing my voice. We, as a church, you know, we love North Reading. We appreciate our community. We ended the year with the attitude that we were going to end the year open-handed. We weren't going to end the year in retreat. It's been a tough year for all of us. It's been a tough year in every arena. It's been very hard on churches and our ability to gather and our members being online only for such a long time, and so much going on with the schools and all the challenges you have faced. And so, we felt like we wanted to really make some serious donations, more than we ever had in our community. We believe in generosity. We believe generosity speaks loud and clear. We believe it really represents the best heart of man when we are generous and we sow these seeds into, unexpected seeds oftentimes, into other people's lives. And so, we felt very strongly with everything that's been going on in the school system. I'm sure, I know it hasn't been easy. I know you probably get maybe more complaints than you do compliments on the great job that the North Reading School System is doing. And we wanted to send this check to the North Reading School Department out of our appreciation. And we did the same with pretty much, you know, the police department, fire department, veterans, the food pantry. You know, our building is in two cities. It's in Wilmington and North Reading. So, we also sent the same amount of check to the Wilmington School Department. And again, just, we weren't doing it for a photo op. We weren't doing it, now obviously, I'm not even on video. We weren't doing it for a photo op. We weren't doing it for necessarily the notoriety, but just the appreciation and the real sense of value that we value our community and we value what you do on an ongoing basis to educate our children, to give us such a good school system. And as a local church, we wanted to say, we're not holding back. We're not retreating. We are going to end 2020 with open-handed and with great expectation, entering in 2021. We told our people about it at the end, the last Sunday of the year and of 2020. And of course, they were ecstatic that we were making these donations to first responders and so forth. And so, it's with great joy. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to greet you. Thank you for the opportunity to say hello to you. Would look forward to meeting you all in person, and we're grateful for this opportunity. So, thank you for taking a moment and allowing us to thank you and encourage you for a job well done.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any comments or want to say anything?
Chairman Buckley, I would just like to, this is Michael Connolly, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. So, I just wanted to publicly thank you, Pastor Jonathan Del Turco and your wife, Verna, for, you know, I got the phone call. I almost didn't believe it was true, and it was such a brightening and amazing news. And I just, I wanted to thank you for being so generous and recognizing, you know, the school system and the efforts that we're all trying to make during some challenging times this past school year. And I want to let you know that we, it's going to just be tremendously valuable to the education and just make a difference, an immediate difference throughout the district. You know, we plan to make some pretty immediate technology enhancements right into the classroom, which will just improve the experience, and it's going to make a big difference. So, thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, there I am. I think I'm on now.
You are.
Thank you. That brings us great joy to hear that. Thank you for saying that, Michael.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Embriano, I know you have your hand up, and then Dr. Daley.
I just wanted to echo the thanks. It's an extremely generous gift, and just many, many thanks.
It's our pleasure.
Dr. Daley.
So, again, yes, thank you, sir, to echo those statements and what Michael said about this having an immediate palpable impact on many of our students. We're going to provide some equity in our classrooms. We're students with technology access, and it's going to be wonderfully well-received. So, thank you so much for your extreme generosity, and please pass on our thanks to your entire community.
Yes, we will. Thank you. You know, it's, I think it's awesome when the local church and our community and community efforts, where we become in partnership. I know the local church has an important part to play. We have some amazing churches in North Reading. I'm friends with all the pastors, and we enjoy when we get the opportunity to get together and have lunch and plan and do other things. And so, the partnership is what we'd like, and we don't want this to be the only time that we donate to the schools and the other important departments of North Reading. So, we appreciate the partnership, and we want to continue to be a partnership, not just a one-time thing. So, thank you for your appreciation. It means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Perfect. I also see a hand from Mr. Papa Basilio. Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in as well, and at risk of being repetitive, say thank you so much. This is an incredibly generous opportunity that you're giving to the schools, and we really appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. I love the fact that it's going to really enhance your technology side of things. You know, we're learning all that too as a church, the importance of, because most of our congregation is online, and we know how valuable that is to have that right and healthy and working and interactive. And so, that brings us a lot of joy. Thank you.
And then continuing, Principal LaPrat.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Pastor Del Turco, just to say thank you, Anthony LaPrat, the principal of the high school, and I feel immensely lucky that we happen to have so many high school students tonight, as it is our, the high school showcase presentation tonight. But, you know, selfishly, in that sense of, you know, I feel selfish in this moment, just like, it's just the high school here, but we talk about community all the time, and we really, I feel like the students work so hard, the faculty work so hard at just keeping that at the forefront of our mind, and to have this experience tonight with that kind of a gift, I'm just, you know, I couldn't be more grateful for the gift itself, but also the opportunity of the gift of our students and many, some of our teachers here as well, just to kind of really, to see it in action. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome, very kind. And yeah, looking forward to hearing all the good reports of how this has helped and looking forward to helping more in the future. So, very nice meeting you all. Thank you for all your hard work. Please, we are very grateful to all of you for what you do. It means a lot to us. Thank you.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you. Now, if I may, Mr. McGowan, would you like to make a motion to officially accept the donation?
I would be honored to do so. I move that the school committee vote with overwhelming gratitude to accept a generous donation of $40,000 from the International Family Church Jonathan and Verna Del Turco to be used at the district's discretion to improve the educational experience for all students at North Reading Public Schools.
I'd be honored to second that.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Pass is unanimous. Surprising. Five zero. Thank you very much, Pastor.
Oh, you're very, very welcome. Thank you, and thanks for taking the time to do this. It means a lot to us.
Of course. We appreciate it. And moving on, we actually have one more donation, and this one is similar but different a little bit. This is, we have, I believe we have Chris Hansen, the president, and Tim Haynes, the treasurer of the North Reading Diamond Club here. The North Reading Diamond Club, I think the school committee members will understand, we've heard their name quite often because they have been supporters of, you know, our school district for a number of years, and they make sizable donations, and they've done them continuously. And so, I asked Mr. Connolly if he would actually put together a list of just over the last few years, and just to kind of run through it quickly, in 2017, they donated $6,000 for a home run fence. In 2018, they donated $7,000 for to help fund new batting cages. In 2018, they donated a little more than $1,000 to improve batting cages and upgrade, some upgrades at Cary Park. In 2019, they donated almost $15,000 to help replace infield grass and add crushed stone to the dugout. In 2020, they donated, you know, about $500 of electrical work for the scoreboard. And then, this year, I believe we have a donation right now for $5,298.53 for work for the scoreboard project and dugout and snack shack repairs. So, in total, since 2017, that is nearly $35,000 from the North Reading Diamond Club. So, if Mr. Hansen or Mr. Haynes are here and would like to say anything, we would love to hear from you.
Sure. Hi, this is Chris Hansen. Can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Hansen. Thank you.
We still have our work cut out for us. Pastor Del Turco, you still have us beat by a few thousand dollars, so we got some more fundraising to do, and that's so great, what you guys have done for the school. Yeah, look, the Diamond Club is, was founded to promote and support, you know, the sport that both Tim and I grew up playing and had such a great experience at North Reading, and we're happy to give back. It's sort of an ongoing initiative. Our big fundraiser is a golf tournament that we put on at Hillview, and surprisingly, we were able to get a sellout crowd this year, or last year, despite the pandemic. So, we were really pleasantly surprised at that, and we'll continue this. We've got a good relationship with Coach Archibald and Dave, and the school committee acknowledging us, I think, continues to strengthen that. So, we're thrilled to be honored by you guys. We appreciate it. I'll turn it to Tim if he's got anything else to say, but we really appreciate your support.
I'll say, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Tim Haynes, class of 1983, by the way, and Chris, I think you're a class of nine?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, yeah.
All right, all right. But I just wanted to add, and I have been involved with the Diamond Club. I've been aware of what the Diamond Club has been doing for, you know, since I graduated from high school, but for the last six years I've been on the board. And the golf tournament that Chris mentioned has been the, you know, the project that's really allowed us to get the community and our alumni very involved, and that's been great. So, it's been good to be involved. I'm the guy who writes the checks, so it's good to see the faces. And Mike Connolly, it was good to see your face as well. I just want to repeat what Chris said, that we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the school. And the last thing I want to say is, and I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce her name correctly, but if it was Shivvi that made the report from the students, my gosh, I think back on when I was in high school, and of course, you know, we were working hard, trying to learn the things we need to learn, but that was quite a report, and I'm so impressed by the things that North Reading students are working on, and that's really great. So, well done there. So, again, thanks for the opportunity.
Wonderful. Trust me, Shivvi could take any of our jobs when she's done at school. So, we appreciate, we very much appreciate the continued support over the years, you know. You know, we do the donations at the end. Everybody doesn't always hear, but we really wanted to take the opportunity to, you know, honor you guys and the work that you've done, because there's a lot of money raised, a lot of work that goes into those fundraisers too. So, I don't know if anybody else has any comments or thoughts. Dr. Daley?
Sure. Just wanted to take a moment to thank both of you and the Diamond Club for your support over the years. We have, as you know, such a successful program for our students, and, you know, it's really, really a unique experience here in North Reading. A lot of pride associated with our sports teams and our baseball field and our baseball teams and softball programs, and you guys have just done a tremendous job. I think when students come back, when other teams come in to visit, we really see, and we get so much use out of these incredible facilities, and it really enhances their experience. So, thank you so much. Every moment that you've put into it, every dollar that you've donated really pays dividends for our students. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Janine?
I just wanted to say thank you to you both. I know there's more people that are involved with the club, but it's very nice, heartening to see former North Reading students come back and give back to the community. So, thank you very much for staying involved.
Anybody before AJ? No, Mr. LaPrat, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. I can't afford to lose the opportunity of the classic dad joke here, but I'm just going to say this on behalf of the high school. When the bedrock of your baseball program is a Diamond Club, you know, that's how lucky we are. And again, it's another great example of, I think, the community commitment. So, thank you, the generosity, and there are things that you could go back further, I know, along that list. So, it is, again, a great gift, and we really relied on you, and you never let us down. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McGowan, would you like to make a motion to accept the donation?
I would indeed. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a generous donation of $5,298.53 from the North Reading Diamond Club to be used to fund North Reading High School baseball field improvements, such as the scoreboard project and dugout repairs at the North Reading High School.
Be honored also to second this one.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Pass is five zero unanimous. Thank you, Chris and Tim, for coming, and thank you for the donation again.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. We really appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, guys, and don't feel, by no means feel insulted if you want. We won't be insulted if you guys leave, but you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like. So, and thank you, Shivvi, for being here. I know you're dropping off as well. Okay, so we're going to go to continued business quickly, I believe. Dr. Daley is going to do an update on, you know, reopening the schools, COVID, whatever we want to call it now. Or do you want to go to the high school? I don't know which would you?
Yeah, I was just thinking with all the students here, maybe we could do their presentation first?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. We'll come back to that one and just do the new business. So, we do have a presentation from North Reading High School tonight, so I'll turn it over to Mr. LaPrat to begin us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen with you and look to... So, thank you. So, this evening, we had an opportunity to have the showcase, the high school showcase tonight, and the document that I shared with you earlier that I'm going to call up right now, excuse me, and make sure that the image is going to work, I think I closed it. So, hang on one second. I'm sorry. But the theme, as you might recognize, is kind of rethinking the three Rs. And I was going back to kind of the old days, and somebody had said, like, I'm not even familiar with the three Rs. So, in that whole sense of, you know, the old reading, writing, and arithmetic, what I'm hoping we see now, and as I think any good educator or academic program wants to say, is, well, is my curriculum real and is it relevant? But I think it even more so exemplified this evening that there's a third R. It's responsive. And I think from even the two, from Shivvi's presentation, talking about what that Thursday morning was like for students and having to kind of go to bed on Wednesday night, or maybe not going to bed on Wednesday night, as many of us did, probably stayed up a lot longer than we thought we would, and then having to floss this Thursday morning, and talking about social activism, talking about, you know, members of the community will give back to the community. There is that third R, that responsiveness piece. And that's what the theme of our showcase this evening is going to be. So, we have four presentations tonight. I'm going to kind of zip right through my piece right here in my intro. We're going to hear first from Ms. Joel Bear in the Bioethics and Genetics class, and what I'm kind of calling a prudent approach, and talking about, you know, a course that really, talking about relevancy today. We're going to hear from Ms. Anono and students with respect to an update on sealed by literacy. Then we're going to hear from Mr. Dexter and students in the art, visual art program, Images in Action. And then, lastly, Mr. Noisi in students from the Modern World Lit, speaking about how that class has been proceeding, we had added to our curriculum not that long ago, in the world beyond our shores. So, with that, that's our program for this evening. I'm going to quickly ask if there's any questions before we proceed. Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, at this point, Ben, I'm assuming we all have a good image of the slideshow here? Okay. So, Ms. Joel Bear and students in the Bioethics and Genetics class, Rodella and Morgan are with us, I believe. Take it away.
Hi, I'm Rodella. I'm a senior at North Reading High School. As you know, I'm taking this class, Bioethics and Genetics. So, the reason I took this class is because, like, personally for me, I'm really interested in medicine. And so, like, the medical world is always changing, and I feel like Bioethics and Genetics is like an important aspect of it, and like one of the aspects of it. And so, like, genetics, I was interested because I was curious as to like what makes you you and how it applies to the real world.
My name is Morgan. I'm also a senior. I took this class because I thought it was different, and actually don't know of any other courses that are like it. We have biology and anatomy, but they don't incorporate the bioethics portion of the course. So, to take a course that is kind of unique was really interesting to me, and I wanted to broaden my horizons beyond what I learned in ninth grade biology. This class is split between curriculum, which is like teaching the principles behind bioethics and the applications of genetics. We started the year with bioethics in the first term. We learned the approaches taken to examine ethical topics. We applied these approaches to the specific ethical topics that we examined. Some of these included if athletes should be able to use drug enhancement, should the COVID vaccine be mandated among school-aged children, should individuals be able to have control over their own bodies and health, and should patients have to give consent if their tissues are used for research?
Hi. So, the slide before, there was a picture of what we do in class. So, it was like the DNA extraction inquiry lab, where at home, we extracted like strawberry DNA at home, and...
And that's like one way to do it in class. Okay, so the one case study, one case study we examine in Bioethics and Genetics is the personal story of Henrietta Lacks. She was an African American woman who was being treated for cancer. And so the doctors noticed that Henrietta, Henrietta Lacks' cells never stopped reproducing, which meant that like her cells would continuously divide and divide until there was multiple copies of it. And after she passed away, researchers began harvesting her immortal cells and selling them off to like labs around the world. And like to this day, her cells are still used. And they're, they're really famous cells. They are known as HeLa cells and they still continue to reproduce in laboratories.
As part of this lesson, we read a scientific article which provided us with relevant facts surrounding this case study. We were asked to identify questions surrounding this topic. These types of questions we learned all year and they're ethical, scientific, legal and personal preference. And on top of these four questions, we identified stakeholders. We collected relevant facts from the article and used them to help us answer these questions. We identified and applied ethical principles that provide argumentation for this case.
Sorry about that, I'm spining my notes.
Can I go back one?
Uh, I think. Morgan, you just read this, right? I think it was the term two.
Yeah.
Yeah. There we go. Sorry about that. So during term two, we have started to relearn some of the basic genetic principles, such as DNA and RNA structure, DNA replication and protein synthesis. And we put them into the context of real life application. For example, we have learned how the structure of DNA is used to create proteins, but there are other regions of DNA, once known to be junk DNA, that are now serving a purpose in sequencing. And we have learned about microsatellite DNA and STRs, or also known as short tandem repeats, and their application and identification. We have also learned how PCR takes place and we amplified specific regions of DNA via DNA replication, creating larger samples that can be used for testing. Example tests where like PCR was used as like the COVID PCR. And what it does is that it tests samples, it tests samples from patients and it looks for like the presence of the bacterial infection. And here we have a picture of a student in our class, Megan McNeil. She's performing a simple DNA extraction. And the lab was, the lab was inquiry based in, based in Mrs. Jolie. The lab was inquiry, inquiry based in Ms. Jolie Bear did not tell us to exact, tell us the exact procedure or question to explore. Like we had to determine if it was easier to extract DNA from certain fruit and like why and determine the applications of DNA extraction. And like I said before, like students, students perform this lab either at home or at school.
A case study we examined in genetics was the case of Earl Washington. He was a black man wrongfully accused of a crime in 1983 that was, he was later found not guilty for by evidence from DNA profiling. This case study allowed us to practice analyzing data from gels and helped us further understand the use of STRs in DNA profiling.
So the introduction was the case study of Earl, Earl Washington, but examining our lab of gels and PCR, Mrs. Jolie Bear had us conduct two additional labs. One was a virtual bacterial identification lab, which required us to take virtual patient samples like stool samples or samples from lymph nodes and extract the DNA from the samples, run them through the PCR and gel electrophoresis and then take the sequence results and apply them to Bioinformatics database called BLAST. From that, we were able to identify the bacteria present in the samples and which were probably making the patient sick. And the second lab we had to conduct was designing and building our own gel electrophoresis chambers.
The unique aspect of this lab is that we were starting from scratch and we were only given the materials shown in the Ziploc bag, which is the picture to the right. From here, we were expected to research the best way to design and build our device. We were given very little like guidance onto where to look, so that just made it a lot more personal and we were expected to figure it out on our own. We had to find our own household items to supplement the materials. We had to build the chamber itself and the comb that makes the wells for the gels. And we had to do that using items we found around the house and whether it worked or not was up to us.
So I can go to that video now. Is that, is that where we are?
Um, I'll show the video right after this. So, once the devices were built, we carried out our lab using like our own devices. We did this at home using our microwaves and sinks which are available. And then in the attached video is another student who's a senior in North Reading High School. Her name is Rachel Schleidenhoffen and she made the video for us. So we can watch that now.
Excellent. Okay, so this should pop right up. So the, the speed, I have it set, so I may have to adjust it, but I checked it before we started.
Addressing whether or not we can use a gel electrophoresis to separate a mystery food coloring mixture. We started by making our buffer solution out of baking soda and water and added some agar powder to a portion of that buffer solution to make our gel. Those cardboard things are cones which make wells for our food coloring to sit in. Using four nine volt batteries and alligator clips, we create our energy supply. Lights away strips of gel at the bottom and top of our container so that we can put our wires to which the batteries will be connected with alligator clips. Cover the surface of the gel with a buffer solution. We add drops of glycerin to each of the food colorings to thicken them and then drop each food coloring into a well within the gel. Attach the energy supply to the wires and we know that electricity is flowing through when we see bubbles. Although it may be hard to see, it is especially notable with the green at the top and the mystery solution at the bottom that the colors are in fact separating within the food dye. It is also notable that the primary colors that make the food dyes, red, yellow and blue, move at different speeds. That foaming around the wires is because our wires were accidentally touching the gel, which it would melt when electricity is passing through the All in all, we can conclude that yes, food dyes can be separated using gel electrophoresis. Gel electrophoresis can be used in the real world to identify suspects in forensic investigations, to detect antibodies in the process of testing vaccines and to amplify the results of artificial DNA replication. So this lab was addressing whether or not we can use a gel electrophoresis
Okay. I think we should be back here. All right. How'd that video work? Okay? Excellent. And I think Rodella and Morgan, I think that's your last slide. Am I correct?
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Tremendous. I learned a lot.
Excellent, excellent job, excellent job, ladies. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I, I will just start because I think Morgan piqued my interest and when, and asking, you know, should the COVID vaccine be required? I think that's, you know, I mean, the idea of what science can do and what science should do are different things, but I'm curious what your, what your thoughts are on that question because obviously there's been a lot of questions about that with the flu vaccine requirement this year in mass and then, you know, COVID coming. I mean, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, and you don't have to answer if you don't want to, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are on the subject.
We actually looked into the ethics behind the flu shot mandate this year. Kind of went like hand in hand with the COVID vaccine. I feel like it would work if everybody was vaccinated, but same with the, the flu vaccine, there were some people that are going to be reluctant to get it. I do think it's ethical because it is for the general safety of the public, but we did look into both the pros and the cons and yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions before we move on? I don't see any hands raised. Janine?
I just wanted to say it's excellent to see the science labs being used and the incredible things that you guys can produce and, and discover. So, good job. Well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayne?
Morgan and Rodella, I just wanted to just thank you for a great presentation. I know you spent a lot of time on this. I know Mrs. Joel Bear worked with you quite extensively on that also. I just wondered what your thought was on having a course that's related to so much that's going on in the world today. Does that really help you become involved in that course a little more than maybe a course that's not as connected with relevant issues of the day?
Yeah, I feel like we got lucky this year to get to take this course because it is so relevant to what's going on in the world. And I think it would be interesting and relevant any year, but especially this year, it does help me understand what's going on and to see that you can't just implement something without thinking about all aspects of it.
Like, yeah, the class definitely like makes you realize like there's two sides to like a story. There's one side that doesn't want, doesn't want the vaccine, one side that does want the vaccine. And it just helps to know what everybody's thinking and like to be more considerate and kind.
Great, thank you.
Tremendous. I, I assume you stopped talking to whoever didn't agree with you in that class? Mr. McGowan, you have a comment?
I was curious about the great presentation, by the way, and what a great class that so glad we're even able to offer such a class, but I was curious about the case of Henrietta Lacks. Without getting into too many details, given that it's an ethics, partly an ethics class, did she consent to the, to the, you know, use of her cells beyond her death or?
No, she did not consent. So one aspect of that was that if she was like a white woman, would the story have been different? So we looked into that a lot as well. And like because she was African American and because she was a woman, like what, did she really have a choice in giving up her cells? And also, so her family still like exists today, her bloodline, and they have received like no like extra money from the government, which is also interesting. So there's also like an ethical question, like should they receive the money that like Henrietta Lacks deserved?
And, and, and should it even, should people, should scientists stop using it now? Yeah, it's a, it's kind of an ongoing lapse.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks.
Dr. Daly?
I just wanted to thank the students for such an incredible presentation. This is a class that I've been able to, to see in some of Mr. Joel Bear's classes. They're, they're fantastic and they, you know, I, I, when I walk in a class like this, I say, why did I have something like this in high school? I would have been so excited. You know, as many of you know, I was an English major and these are the kind of classes that make me want to go into the sciences. I mean, they're so fascinating and I, I do a 10 minute walkthrough and I just, I could sit there all day. So they're fantastic. Great teaching, great student engagement and the students did a great job tonight speaking to all their learning. Wonderful job.
We're getting lots of questions too. Henry Pelmes?
Um, yeah, sorry. I had a quick question about kind of the structuring tonight. I am on the swim team and as Shivi mentioned, we do have a swim meet tonight. So I was supposed to be part of the presentation for the Modern World Literature class. I was wondering if we could potentially present that next so that I could be able to speak but still get to run off to my swim meet.
I would certainly be fine with that if Mr. LaPret would.
Sure, I think we can definitely go out of order, but I just want to, Morgan, that's going to work for you? Morgan's, Morgan's doubled up. She's a, she's going to present in the next group. So I just want to make sure that her, because I think there was a couple of scheduling things and Henry, I, I apologize. But Morgan, this will work if I, if I bump Modern World Lit up?
Yeah, whatever's easier.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, Henry. We're going to zip down to you, my friend.
What are you swimming tonight, Henry? Do you know?
Uh, I'm swimming four events. I'm doing the 100 freestyle, 100 backstroke, the 200 medley relay and the 400 freestyle relay.
All right.
That doesn't inspire you, you know, right now to talk about your English class. I don't know what.
I'll see you down there later on, Henry.
All right. So Mr. Nozzi, you have, you have a student group with us. I'm going to hand it off to your students.
Yeah.
Away we go.
I, I just want to briefly introduce the course and then the, and the students will give you some more information about it. So, Modern World Lit is one of our five English courses that seniors can take. They have options in their senior year. It's our second year running the class. And all the books were published after 1960, except for Things Fall Apart, which was 1958. That was a little oversight. And then cover multiple genres, you know, nonfiction, fiction, we have graphic novel, we have memoir. And the goal was just to, you know, expose them to, to newer, more diverse literature and some of the books are here at the bottom. And then we have our next slide here. I think this is going to be Zach talking a little bit what we do in class day to day.
Yeah, so I'm Zach Baker. I'm a senior. This, the years look a lot, a lot different. Typically, we start off with a jam board, which I don't know if you guys are familiar with. It's just like a document that all students can post on and Mr. Nozzi has like access about. We typically post quotes from the book that we took from the night before on like the theme or the plot or connections to the book that we're reading. And then Mr. Nozzi will handpick them and ask us to explain what they mean and like what our thought process is compared to his. That's basically how we use the Google Meet and we keep everyone like involved at home too, so that no one's not paying attention, I guess. Connections to the world around us, we use, he assigns us typically a prompt like for a night or in class, we have to write about how this relates to like around us or we just read a book about a dictator and we had to like write about how he was compared to some people for a formative assessment. We could write about him and his impact on history. We use critical and creative responses also every day. Or not every day, we've done five of them where we typically will choose like Hill, give us an option to write a prompt about something to explain how this relates to the text or we can just go why we thought the reader did this and what our opinions are on everything. About it.
Can I advance again or we?
Yeah, so this is meant to kind of talk more about how we are folk, are managing the class with COVID and everything going on. So, of course, we're doing a lot of reading. We're on to our third or fourth book already. And we're doing a lot of analyzing of everything going on in the stories. And a big part of that is kind of getting the books to us. It's pretty difficult nowadays with COVID and everything going on to get a hard copy of a book to everyone. As simple as it sounds, a lot of people are not coming into school or only in school half the time. And so what we've actually been using a lot of is Hoopla, which I believe Zach mentioned earlier. And what that is, is it's an online website where you can sign up for free through the Boston Public Library. And it allows you to rent, I believe, up to like 12 or 14 titles per month. And it's a great way for us to all be on the same page and have the book available as long as we have a computer readily available to us. So it's very convenient and it's a great kind of way to help manage with everything going on.
Excellent. Is Sarah with us?
Yeah, so this is, this is just sort of an outline of, you know, I think more how like the course connects back to those three Rs that Mr. LaPret discussed earlier in, in the evening here. So, I think you guys are going to talk a little about these three. discussed earlier in, in the evening here. So I think you guys are going to talk a little about these three themes that sort of broke down into the, uh, to the, the course title.
Yeah. So talking about, um, the course, it's obviously modern world literature. And so, uh, as Mr. Nozzi mentioned, we're reading a lot of kind of more modern books. Um, I think a lot typically when you think of kind of a high school English class, a lot of people think of the classics with Shakespeare and um, The Odyssey and Moby Dick and things along those lines. And I think it's very helpful to give students the opportunity to read more modern literature and more recent and relevant stories. Um, even though we see themes from, you know, the classics in our everyday life, still getting to read about something from the perspective of a character in the 21st century can offer a really unique look and kind of be more helpful to us to sort of put ourselves in the shoes of the protagonist compared to something from the 16 or 17 hundreds.
Um, adding on to what Henry said, um, so the world, the word world, um, relates to the modern world literature class in the sense that it helps students to see the world beyond our shores, empowers students to use literature as a lens to see diversity and understand the world around them through stories. Um, I think that it's easy for the typical high school student to get caught up in their own lives. And I also think it's very important for all students to have an opportunity to take a class like this one that allows them to take a step back from their own lives and read about real current events like Henry said, and that have shaped the way the world is today. Um, one of the books that we've read that Mr. Nozzi discussed was called What Is The What? Um, in this story, we, in this novel, we were able to learn about a historical event, the Ethiopian war. And also we were able to learn about the struggles that immigrants faced when adjusting to life in America. Another book that we read is called A Thousand Splendid Suns. We were able to learn about living as a woman during the rule of the Taliban in Afghanistan. Both of these books have exposed us to important historical events and struggles that real people face around the world today. Um, although we'll never fully understand the hardships of other people in areas of the world. Um, reading novels that expose us to diverse concepts, places and characters in a way allows students to experience walking a mile in someone else's shoes. This gives students like myself a newfound appreciation for our own lives while also gaining perspective on the lives and hardships of others around the world throughout history. With these diverse experiences gained from reading novels around the world, students are able to look at the world and the lives of others from different points of view other than their own.
Thank you, Sarah. I think, yeah, so we did go, go, is that, that wraps it up? Uh, I'm going to jump a, a little bit around here in a second. Steven, are you swimming as well? Is Steven with us?
I, I'm not swimming.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was, I was under the impression you were also on a time management issue too, no?
No.
Okay. Well, excuse me. So thank you, uh, for that presentation. Uh, questions?
Mr. Hayne still has his hand up, so I think he has to ask, ask a question now. And does anybody have any questions? An excellent presentation. I just, and I mean, in, in, in the general, in the general, my, my quick question would be for the general literature. I mean, i- is it, is it mainly geared towards a lot of older writings? Is that why this is really important? Because a lot of the same things that we read when, you know, I was in high school are still being read? Or is, or has there been a lot, a big change in what general literature classes are, are reading?
There's been, there's been more change with the, uh, the underclassmen English classes, but up until two years ago, the, the typical senior course was British literature, which, you know, they started with Beowulf and did Shakespeare and Canterbury Tales. So it was, yeah, it was, it was pretty old. And then, you know, we, we get up to like 1984, but it, it wasn't a lot of new titles available that sort of fit in at that point. So, um, we just a few years to get, few years ago to get this, you know, the more relevant recent stuff out there.
So again, seniors have, as you said before, Mr. Nozzi, right? There's five options.
Yeah.
So I can have a, a, a specific theme, um, literary, uh, approach. And I can take another one as an elective too. So,
Yeah.
you know, it's, 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 it's the breadth piece. That this course addresses for sure.
I'm fairly certain, I did not understand, understand Beowulf at all when I heard it the first time. So I should probably read it again.
Thank you. Just again, thank you to the students. Great presentation. Mr. Nochi for your teaching and also your leadership of our, our ELA, uh, department for so many years and really helping to shape, you know, again, great courses that, that I would have been so, um, excited to have had the opportunity for. And when you think about what we talked about with current events and, and history and all those, uh, ideas together, how we're able to access that through our courses. It's really fantastic. So great job. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, we're going to bring back a familiar face here with, with Morgan, uh, who is going to be part of our update on the Seal of Biliteracy. Uh, and she's going to be joined by, um, Anna and Caroline Casey, who I believe are on the call. Uh, so I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Sanarno in that group.
Hi, I'm Amy Sanarno and I'm the curriculum coordinator of world languages and, um, through, um, that role, I'm able to work with the Seal of Biliteracy and, um, the, the wonderful students I have presenting with me. But then also to note, um, we have several other Seal of Biliteracy candidates and, um, already recipients that, you know, presented in the other topics as well. So there's strong representation for the Seal of Biliteracy in the meeting tonight. So, um, from, from there, I'll, I'll pass it on to our great and talented students.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sanarno. I'm really, really happy to be here tonight. Um, hi everyone. My name is Anna and I'm just going to briefly share some of my experience with the Seal of Biliteracy. So I didn't grow up in the United States. I grew up in Russia and Israel. And unfortunately, once I moved to Massachusetts, I began to lose a lot of my Russian and Hebrew proficiency. And I'm really lucky to have found the Seal of Biliteracy because preparing for those tests really pushed me to keep up with my native languages and it also made me feel really, really welcome in North Reading. And I think this program accomplishes a really important task, which is celebrating a variety of cultures and backgrounds.
I'm back again. Um, I, I have been taking French through the North Reading High School World Language Program since I was in eighth grade. Um, although I'm not a native speaker, I come from a French speaking family. I'm from Canada. So learning this language is very important to me and now I can speak it with my mom, which is really cool.
Hello, everybody. My name is Caroline Casey. I'm a senior. And I am a candidate for the Seal of Biliteracy in Spanish, which I will be looking tomorrow, actually. And unlike the other two, Anna and Morgan, I do not come from a Spanish speaking family. I am a native English speaker. So I'm so excited to take the test because it will represent everything I have learned as a student of the North Reading World Language Program since seventh grade. And in the future, I hope and plan to travel to different countries, hopefully Spanish speaking countries. And having the Seal of Biliteracy and the proficiency in a partner language will help me to immerse myself fully in different cultures and different nations.
So to just start out with some of the requirements for the Seal of Biliteracy, first on the left, you can see a picture of all of the recipients of the Seal of Biliteracy in 2019. Um, you can also read all of their names down below. Unfortunately, we don't have a picture of the recipients in 2020 because all of the tests were administered remotely. Um, and just, ju- just to talk about some of the requirements. So a really important aspect of the Seal of Biliteracy is that it's the Seal of Biliteracy. So it doesn't only require, um, a fluency in another language. You also have to be proficient in English. So the first requirement to earn the seal is to achieve a score of 472 on the MCAS. Um, and then the second requirement is to score intermediate high on the stamp exam in a partner language. Or if it, um, if a language is not offered with the stamp exam, a student has to submit a portfolio assessment. Um, and students may also learn a certificate of biliteracy attainment if they show an intermediate level of English and a partner language.
Hi, um, so as you can see here in 2018, it was the beginning of the stamp test in North Reading. It was administered to French, Spanish and Arabic communiques, communicators in order to obtain some raw data going forward. And then in 2019, North Reading Middle School students started taking Spanish one in sixth grade for half a year as opposed to years prior, like when I was in middle school, we started in seventh grade for half the year and then began Spanish one or French one in eighth grade. So this was just, uh, an earlier start and hopefully gaining more proficiency as they got older. And then finally this year, a new course was introduced at North Reading High School for Spanish culture. Um, this is an opportunity for students to double up in a partner language. And it fully immerses themselves in the culture, learning more about the culture than they would in a regular Spanish class. And, uh, World Languages Program hopes to introduce a course like this in French in the future. And the last thing is this year, the stamp test will be administered as the mid-year exam for Sp- Spanish and French, five students, including myself. So we have the opportunity to earn this seal as a part of our course rather than in addition to our course, which is exciting.
Can I interrupt for a second? Just to keep in mind, as I'm sharing with the school committee, that the mid-year exam with an asterisk because we did, we did make our decision, um, the last time we spoke that we're, it's an exam at the middle of the year. It doesn't carry the same weight as our old kind of mid-year exam, uh, model. Okay. Just re-
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's very true. It's, yeah. Middle of the year exam, which we're actually taking tomorrow. So.
Don't want any confusion. So thank you. I think, yes, here we go. We get some data. Excellent.
Yep. So here in this table, you can just kind of see the variety of languages that students tested in from 2019 to 2021. And just to note on something that Caroline mentioned earlier, 2019 is not only when North Reading began to administer this program, it is only when Massachusetts as a whole implemented the Seal of Biliteracy. So I'm just really happy to note that North Reading started really early on. They launched their pilot program along with the rest of the schools in Massachusetts. Um, so as you can see in 2019, um, exams were administered in Arabic, French, Japanese, Portuguese, Russian and Spanish. And, um, three people earned the Seal of Biliteracy with distinction, which means, um, that you're achieving in a higher score than necessary to pass. And there were four Biliteracy attainment awards given out. And then in 2020, you can also see the variety of languages that students received the seal in, which were Arabic, French, Greek, Portuguese and Spanish. And as you can see, the amount of seals of biliteracy awarded were, went up from the previous year. Um, and the amount of seals of ability with, with biliteracy with distinction also went up. And then in 2021, um, up to date, we are planning to, um, sorry, up to date, the admit, the exams that were already administered were in Hebrew, Mandarin, Portuguese, Russian and Spanish. And there are more exams planned, um, such as Caroline and Morgan mentioned in French and Spanish tomorrow. And perhaps in several other languages later in the year. Um, and you can see that the numbers are a bit low for this year, but that is because there are a lot of students still registered that haven't taken it yet. Um, as of right now, we have about 25 more students that are registered to take the Seal of Biliteracy in the winter and spring, which is higher than we've ever had before.
Very exciting.
So represented here are students who obtained the Seal of Biliteracy that are not native speakers. Um, these students learned their second language through North Reading High School and they do not necessarily come from a family that speaks this language at all. Um, in 2019, three Spanish students earned the Seal of Biliteracy. Um, there were no French students that year. In 2020, despite the remote circumstances, one French student and 10 Spanish students passed. This year in 2021, all French or Spanish five students are enrolled to take the Seal of Biliteracy tomorrow morning. And one Spanish student has already earned it. So, um, on the right, you see some noteworthy facts. In 2020, every student who tried for the seal earned it. Among these students was senior Matt McGotti, who earned the seal in both French and Spanish. Matt also earned a scholarship for his achievement alongside Gabriel Miranda, who obtained the seal in Portuguese.
Excellent. I think that's your last slide. Um, any questions for this group? I, you know, I, I don't think we can, you know, emphasize the importance of this component into our world languages program. It's been fantastic. And I think we're seeing, uh, you know, the dividends of that.
Excellent, excellent presentation, everybody. Um, Dr. Daly, your hand is up. I don't know if it's meant to be, but you're first.
I just want to, it's, it's so wonderful hearing the students present this and speak about how meaningful it is. Um, this is something that we've worked on for quite some time in the district. I remember the first time I heard about this years ago at the state level and, um, you know, what, what hit me as well as, you know, students that are English learners coming from, um, a different background and then so often we think of it in a deficit model, you know, how do we get these students who don't speak English, how to pass MCAS? And that's so much of what my experience was as a teacher early on. And I loved hearing that this is a way to recognize them for keeping up with their heritage language as well as, um, as, as learning English. And then what we're hearing here from a representative group of students tonight, some of you, it's fantastic that you've had that incentive to keep up with, with a language from your, from your family that you may have learned or to take classes, um, that you may continue with. And then also just a huge testament to, to our world language program, which is fantastic. So very proud of all the students. And Ms. Sanarno and her, her work as a curriculum leader and as an advocate, she really took on this, um, group to, to lead in North Reading, um, to, to establish the Seal of Biliteracy, to, to advocate for it. She also does all the logistical pieces, but I just want to make it clear how proud we are of her work. Um, being involved in the, in the frameworks for the Massachusetts that just came out. She and Ms. Gilbert were both involved. So having two North Reading educators with their name, um, on that document to really help steer that through and make sure that it represented all that it does. Um, and we really are a leader in the Commonwealth. There's a, there's a listserv about this with questions with other districts that are starting this up. And, and, you know, Amy is always one of those people that jumps right in to, um, to, to help and guide other districts and we're really taking a lead. So I'm very, very proud of that. Want to thank her for that as well. So wonderful job, great presentation and thank you for all that you do, folks.
Thank you, Dr. Daly. Rich, comment, question?
Yeah, thanks. Although, uh, Dr. Daly, you, you pretty much touched on every, or, or, uh, every point that I was going to make. It, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's great to see that this has evolved into, um, a real path for students to show their passion from, i- i- in, in whether it's, whether it's their passion for their cultural heritage or their family heritage, or just their passion to learn a new language. Uh, you know, we've, we've struggled for, uh, a while now to increase the offerings of, of, uh, language in, in the schools. Um, and, uh, you know, I was, I remember when we, uh, when the school committee, when this, when this program was, uh, presented to the school committee, um, and, and we, you know, obviously we're thrilled to be able to, uh, approve it and, 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 and have it go forward, but I never thought it would have quite, I, I didn't expect it to have, uh, quite the impact that it did, has had. And, uh, and that is a testament to the whole, uh, program and, and to Ms. Sanarno as well. So, uh, thanks to you students. That was a great presentation.
Mr. Hayne.
I just wanted to congratulate Amy. I know she's done all this work and, um, I think the data that, that, uh, Caroline spoke to and Anna spoke to and Morgan spoke to shows how much that work has paid off. I wish I could be speaking to you in a foreign language right now and really impress you, but I didn't have the Seal of Biliteracy, which makes me very jealous of people who can speak another language. So it's really great. I wish you luck tomorrow, Caroline. And I think, uh, Amy, you picked three great representatives to talk about this program, uh, tonight. So just wanted to congratulate everyone. And I'll lower my hand this time, Mr. Buckley.
I hear you, Mr. Hayne. I can't even pronounce everyone's name on the committee still. So, uh, Janine, we'll go to you next.
I apologize if you hear dogs barking in the background. Um, I just, uh, wanted to say congratulations to everyone and I know it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work to uh, learn another language, let alone to and um, to miss uh, Saint Arno. Congratulations on, you know, bringing such vibrancy to the foreign language in North Reading. And uh, just a really quick question. I know it just started a couple of years ago, so maybe. The first class that goes into as a freshman will have had. Three years at the middle school instead of only two and is there any hint of a difference in um, their capabilities as a. Foreign language learners?
Hi, thanks for the question. Um, so it's really um, this year's seventh graders that started um, level one in the sixth grade. Um, so we won't see them as seniors, you know, for quite a few years now. Um, and we have quite a few moving variables at the same time. First, we have, you know, started kids um, at level one in sixth grade instead of doing exploratory. You were jumping right into level one, but then also we have new curriculum frameworks from the state. Um, and so we're also rewriting curriculum at the same time. So um, it'll be difficult to um, differentiate, you know. Well, I guess I should say that, you know, hopefully we'll see big results and we'll see big results because we're. Um, attacking multilingualism in North Reading from many different fronts. And then um, you know, really um, trying to ensure that all students in North Reading have the chance to graduate with the world readiness skill of being multilingual.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'll just jump into my comments very quick and say, I think this is an important thing and I. I, I think that the seal of by literacy is nice because it, it, it brings people together, helps you be proud of your past and, you know, be able to communicate to people, but. You know, not, not be different, but celebrate the differences in your, in your heritage. Um. I think the school committee has wanted to do a lot over the years and I, I applaud Dr. Daly and Mr. Bernard before him on. Really pushing this and trying to get the, you know, the sixth grade and. And, you know, bringing global child and I have kids in elementary school, just to see them excited to know. Like my kids can just say some things in Spanish in elementary, you know, and I think we need to continue to build on that um, in order to. Really build by literacy, you have to, you know, start early. And so I think. I think this is a, a step in the right direction, but there's still more work to come, but. I think, I think it's great and I appreciate the passion of everybody and. You know, being able to speak Hebrew and Russian is just so cool, honestly. And so um. And I appreciate everybody coming tonight and presenting and. Great job, everyone. Okay, Mr. LaPrat, ready for the, the last part?
All right, here we go. They're very patient. Extremely patient, but with, you know, in a sense of this, this is really gonna wow you in the, in the, the visual sense. Uh, we have some tremendous artists. Sharing their art here at the end, and I think again, to, to go back. And, you know, what, what, what were we talking about originally, right? What was that class about? Real, relevant and responsive. And I think what you're gonna see um. From the, the students that are gonna speak next and present next is uh. A really interesting twist on that same theme. So, uh, Mr. Dexter, do you want to begin or? We hand it over to the students.
Uh, yes, please. Thank you, Mr. LaPrat. And uh, it's a, it's a great honor to speak to all of you tonight. Um, and I really enjoyed all the. Previous presentations. Um. So um, yeah, I want to talk to you a little bit about these three students. Um, and. The, they are in the uh, art portfolio preparation course. Stephen Flurry, Nessrin Ordeal and Kylie Copolas. Among many technical and creative student works, these student, these three students. And their work stood out. Stephen uses towns to serve those in need in our community. Nessrin. Reminds us that identity is multifaceted. And Kylie's paintings offer a positive perspective on our new normal. What I appreciate the most about the work you'll see in a moment is. Clear artistic intent. Um, so what I mean by that is uh, they've created art that conveys a message and is an artifact of expression. And so just a little bit more targeted and that is also a part of the new um. Department of Education's. Visual arts frameworks, artistic intent. So uh, these three students, I've had them as this um. For many art courses by now and so they're seasoned artists, but they're, I really appreciate their approach. And I would also like to add that um. These three students have many other works that would also very much impress you that I hope we can share. And I hope, you know, the community can see a lot of outstanding work later on, later on in the year. So thank you. And uh, now I'd like to turn the mic over to Mr. Stephen Flurry.
Thank you, Mr. Dexter. So my piece is called Cardinals Greetings. Um, it is made on mixed media paper with colored pencil. And this artwork is important to me because it represents greetings and new discoveries. I created this holiday card to give to those less fortunate. The Pegasus House is a recovery center currently supporting 13 women. It is important to spread positivity and share something I find special with others. It was a great moment for me to meet some of the women. Knowing that they would be receiving art supplies for art therapy because of my actions. And I think art therapy is very important. It definitely helps me cope with anxiety among other issues. And um, going there to meet the women was just like absolutely amazing and I got to even share some like interests with them. And my like interest in um. Cartoon drawing, anime and different, different types of art that I get really inspired by. So. Um, that's why this piece is very important to me.
So Stephen, you were able to make a donation to the Pegasus House with, with these cards? Tremendous. That's, that's fantastic. I'm gonna advance the slide, okay?
Hi, my name is Nessrin. I'm a senior at um, the high school and my piece is titled Identity and it's a self-portrait made with inking pens. Um, so my artwork explores what makes up our identity, but disparages the idea that you're an individual should be reduced down to a single trait. So it was really just a reflection of our own individuality as well as the mark we want to leave in our communities. And although our fingerprints are unique to us, there is much more to our personal identity that we can define. Embrace and advocate for towards a greater good beyond a stereotype.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add this link so this, this should enlarge for us. If it doesn't, I, I have it on another slide. All right, yep. Like it wants to. All right, oh, there it is. Technology is slow sometimes, what can you do? Just ask the basketball team, right? Oh, I thought this, this worked on. No, um, Mr. LaPrat, I can make sure that um, we can share out a, a full version, you know, and a large version of this later on and. I definitely would encourage people to um, really just click pinch and zoom. Zoom way into this image because you can really see um, you know, all the depth that. Nessrin put into it. Uh, you know what? I'm gonna let it run and see if we can, oh, there we go.
Um, yeah. So when we enlarge the photo, you can see the, the quality of like the size of the dots and the mark making that I use in a technique called stippling. And the idea behind the use of the technique was that all these little things were coming up to. Create the image that was my portrait and. There was a little space left for viewers to interpret like what was supposed to be there and it's kind of just embedded in a fingerprint to. Reflect the overall concept of. Your fingerprint and the marks you're leaving and what makes you you essentially.
Fascinating.
So yeah, so I'm going to introduce the next artwork by Kylie Copolas.
All right, let me make sure I can get uh. Back to our. Slideshow.
Um, thank you. So this is one of the three pieces and I titled this Beauty Beyond the Mask. And this was done on illustration board with acrylic paints. Um, so with this project, I wanted to portray. One of the most pressing social issues right now that has been present uh, during 2020 and 2021. And this is wearing masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19. The goal of these pieces was to show that masks do not tamper beauty. And mask wearing is our new normal now, so we might as well learn how to embrace it. Um, this artwork was very important to me because it has helped me to sort of see light during. Times that can be very dark, such as the global pandemic that we're in right now. And it's helped to. Sort of spread positivity and I hope that others could be cheered up by these vibrant and bright images.
Kylie, commend us. Thank you. That is our. Presentation. Does anyone have a questions for the art students?
I, I'll just start by saying those are so cool. I mean, really, they were incredible. Rich, you have a comment, question?
Yeah, I, I just, they're just amazing. Uh, um, and I really like. Again, as, as you mentioned, the, the intentionality of it is great. The, the, what you're trying to accomplish. And what you're saying with the art is really wonderful as well. Uh, they're, they're really cool.
Dr. Daly.
Just to echo that, I, I, one of my great pleasures, I get to observe the, the arts and performing arts teachers and I've worked with Mr. Dexter over the years. He was mentioned earlier tonight as well with his approach to the social justice discussions the last few weeks. Um, great classes and great, you know, I, I think we do a great job. And it, it's getting better every year of exhibiting student work, um, sharing it out, promoting it. Um, Mr. Dexter's published it, it's on the website. Um, and just, you know, I, this article fantastic and you guys should be so proud and. Um, I, I just, I love our art shows and I love when we showcase and get to share as we did tonight and. I've said a few times that um. You know, one of the things that I think, I think school committee meetings, I think the presentation, the package. Virtually is, is somewhat enhanced than, than in the past. I mean, the fact that. This is gonna be recorded, archived and can be blown up like that on screen, I think is a, a great advantage to, you know, one of the silver linings to. To what we're doing right now. So I, I really appreciated getting to see that and uh, be able to go back and. And watch this again. Great stuff. Thank you so much.
Diana?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment and say that. I hope the three of you students continue with art because even after high school, you're so talented. And you know, sometimes it's hard, you, you can see the passion behind it as well. Obviously, the three of you probably love. What you're doing in this class and so I hope you truly do continue it in some way, shape or form, whether it's a hobby or even more. Um, clearly you guys are very, very talented.
Chris?
Um, yeah, I'd like to agree with, with uh, Ms. Bellwell and Mr. McGowan. Uh. Clearly you guys are incredibly talented and I, you know, I'm, I'm easy to impress. I've never drawn anything ever that someone recognized what it was. And you guys are already better than that, but what, what stood out to me beyond that was, was what Mr. McGowan said, the, the intention behind it. Each of you clearly had. Uh, an interesting thought you wanted to explore and a purpose behind making fantastic art. And I think that speaks to, to uh. Your qualities as artists and I think that's incredible.
Mr. Hayne.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, congratulate the students with all that hard work, but we often talk about um. Finding your gift and, and looking inside and seeing the gift in others, but also finding the gift in ourselves. So. I clearly, these gifts are very here, but what I love about the fact that you have the art gift is that you use your art gift. To help others, to make others think about relevant things today. To represent um, in, in, in look at uh, yourself in a different way. And I love how you've projected that out there. So I think you've represented. And truly have found a gift within yourselves that you've passed on to other people. And I think that's just so impressive. So congratulations.
Janine?
I just wanted to comment, you know, obviously you're extremely talented, all of um, the work that I saw. Um, but I just wanted to mention, it, it's gone beyond just pencil and paper or, you know, watercolors and paint. You guys are using new technology and it looks like. It's, you know, done by a professional. So I just wanted to say congratulations on embracing. Not only, you know, the, the pencil and paper, but also the technology. And being able to create incredible works of art.
And I, I'd like to just jump in on the overall presentation tonight. Mr. LaPrat, I think this is a great presentation. Um. You know, in, in years past, there's been different things that have been done, but you know, I truly thought this was impressive tonight and. The one thing that I think from hearing students speak and we've heard a lot of students speak in different forums, you know, social justice, we've. People are, were on, you know, the reopening um, committee. And I am just so impressed with the students that we have in North Reading. Um, what is clear to me about today versus, you know, when I was growing up, as we like to talk about is. You know, the, the schools really are turning out citizens of the world. They're turning out well-rounded people. Who look beyond just books. They look at what's happening in, in the world, you know, they're, it's just. I mean, the work is great, you know, the classes are interesting, but. The people that present, just the way that you present is just so impressive and. You know, I just want to applaud everybody here and the teachers that are helping to, you know, develop these incredible young people. I mean, I, I'm just so thoroughly impressed by the students that, that I've run into in different presentations and so, you know, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. If I, if I can just take a minute. You know, I think, you know, as, as putting this together and the, the. The faculty responsiveness to uh, the request to say, hey, you know, we have an opportunity to be a, a, you know. Present for the school committee. And, you know, the, the evolution of real and relevant and responsive. Completely appropriate, but I think what was extremely evident to me tonight is hearing from. The teachers and from the students that the underneath, the underlying are of reflective. Um, also kind of driving the, all four presentations. If you, you go back to the first thing. The first presentation about, you know, the genetics and the bioethics, just. Such a reflective piece for students to think about the ethical um, component that's going on there. We talked about bio, uh, by literacy. And that reflectiveness of what, what do we need to be with respect to a, a citizen in the world and there. And the new texts in this course that's now in its second year, allowing students an opportunity to be reflective again. Um, through literature and through authors and through characters and, and again, at, at the end here with the artwork. So uh, you, you wonder why I have a smile on my face all the time. This is, you know, this is, this is my day. Um, and I get to work with wonderful people and see wonderful students in action. Uh, so. Thank you, and it was a great opportunity and I really appreciate the students hanging in there. I know some of you have a busy day tomorrow and there's a lot going on. Uh, and you know, this was a, this is gonna be a couple of minutes of your, of your night, you know, and here we are, eight o'clock. So. I'm very appreciative and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Buckley.
Yes, thank, thank you all. Um, Dr. Daly, your hand up. I don't know if you have any other comments. I can't see you.
I'll just say um, good luck to our swim team as well, but you know, it, it just did hit me tonight that um. It just hit me that, you know, none of this was couched tonight with the fact that it's COVID, right? And so I just think when we, when we get, uh, give me one second. When we get questions about are we falling behind, what, what are we facing this year? Um, I think this is just a testament to the dedication of our teachers, our students, our administrators, our parents, everyone. Making this work in a hybrid model and learning at a high level. And, and I just feel like. You, you, you're seeing here that, that our students are getting a great experience um, this year. So thank you to everyone for all your hard work. Uh, I'm tremendously proud of everything you've shared. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And we will move on. We're moving on to high school athletics update. Thank you, everybody. And please feel free to drop off if you'd like.
The high school athletics update, I believe, Mr. Lepret and Mr. Johnson will present an update on high school athletics.
Sure. Um, Mr. Lepret, you have the uh, can you put the uh, the uh slides on the screen?
Sure, Dr. Daly, do you am I am you am I doing that or do you have that?
Uh, I can do it as well.
I'm happy to do I I.
If you have it right there, if you don't mind.
Let me uh, yep, let me grab it. Hang on one second. I don't think I'm not sharing here, man, am I?
Not at the moment. Oh. Well, we we're talking a little bit about the uh current season that we're in and the additional season that's starting up. Um, uh, we all grew up with kind of the uh the fall, winter, spring athletic program and um they've added a fourth one, uh, termed the wedge season this year, which um starts at the end of February. So but okay. Okay, you can go to the second slide. Perfect. Okay, a little bit about where we are right now. Um, currently in the in our winter season, uh, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls swimming, we know they're swimming just about right now, uh, boys and girls hockey and gymnastics. Um, one hundred and thirty-four participants in these seven programs. And um all the teams have started competition. We began this um December fourteenth, so it was two weeks late from what we traditionally do the Monday after Thanksgiving, but we haven't had a um a problem since. Um, as of uh tonight, boys and girls basketball have each played four games, boys and girls hockey have each played two games, and swimming is having its second event tonight. Uh, the gymnastic pro co-op with uh Danvers, um, they had a little glitch with a um, uh, an issue at Danvers, but they're they understand that the they're back and running in the next day or two. And uh they'll be having their meets uh fairly soon. This current winter season, um, it started, um, oh, excuse me. It started, um, uh, the competition January fourth and it runs to February sixth currently. We allowed that um the last two weeks of the season um to be for makeups, which we already have scheduled a makeup uh hockey game with Newburyport um for Feb for um February thirteenth. And uh we were also hoping, uh, because one of the things that we haven't been able to do um in uh with it with no state tournaments, uh, we tried to do it in the fall and uh it did not work out. But we're trying to do in the winter times, to have like a little mini tournament at the end. So kids are not only just playing for a league championship, but there is that kind of raise the trophy at the end that we're hoping to do. Um, what begins after the winter season, talking a little bit about tonight, uh, beginning uh February twenty-second until April twenty-fifth is what they're calling the wedge season. All right, that's going to consist of football, volleyball and boys and girls indoor track, which will probably be run outside. Um, limited uh indoor events. They'll be run around the larger oval um to give them a uh place to run. Most of our venues, not all of our venues that we've used in the past, um, Reggie Lewis Center um in Roxbury, uh, they're not opening. So um, there was a little bit of a design that by the time we have competition outside for both football, which I think is um Friday, March thirteenth and about four or five dates beginning about that time for indoor track, that's about the time we begin our spring season anyway. So it wasn't unusual for you to drive by the third week in March and see boys lacrosse out there and boy uh boys and girls lacrosse and track running out there. So we're not that far ahead of it um from where we traditionally would be outside. Uh, we'd like to open up for the web season, the family ID. Um, for uh, uh, you know, January eighteenth, not just for boys and girls indoor track, but for everybody. Um, we did the, we did registration for football and volleyball in the fall already. It was just a sign up. There were no fees um uh added in. So I'm not sure if everybody who signed up is going to participate. And we might have people that didn't sign up that want to participate now. So those numbers could change a little bit. Um, and I think, you know, obviously, you know, we need to know when we start collecting the uh the fee for the wedge season, if there's any um hiccups in that starting on time. We waited a little bit in the winter season. Uh, we have collected um all of the fees to date. It took us a little bit of time to get those in, but we want to be patient with people. Um, and make sure that the season uh began. Uh, for the web season, we are going to need to turn the lights on on the turf a little bit earlier than uh we have in the past. Um, uh, planning to start using that about March first for uh the football, because we want to make sure that, you know, football has some decent numbers now. We all know the uh success that uh boys and girls um track have had. So we want to make sure that there's not a lot of overlap with those two programs. Or, you know, they can be, you know, have the turf themselves. And then they can leave and another group show up. So we probably will be using the lights a little bit more. And again, um, the weekend of uh March twelfth is when the, you know, technically the football season can begin. Um, whether we do go back to the old Saturday afternoon games because of the weather being a little chilly at night. Um, you know, we might, uh, we've talked a little bit about maybe booking a Friday night game, maybe at like five o'clock. And if it's and if it wasn't, we have really bitterly cold weather, we could probably move it to Saturday just in case. And right now, uh, this is the uh, you know, the uh eight hundred pound gorilla in the room right now, um spectators at contest. Um, I fielded a few calls about this um in the past. At the very, very beginning, just like we did in the fall, um, we said no spectators because we really wanted to have our own little bubble and kind of know where people uh were going to be. So uh currently in the Cape Town League, nobody is allowing spectators at the games. Um, there has been a little bit of talk of trying to do some type of um senior night for the parents. I've been through an awful lot of effort with um uh people in our building. Uh, we do have the uh live stream, the video um that uh they can watch the basketball games inside. Um, the same thing goes over to hockey. Um, for the video, they Kasabowski Rink has installed um what's called Live Barn, and I watched the game last night because we were double booked. We had a basketball game um at home and then a hockey game at Kasabowski. So I was able to watch one while I was uh at the other one. And um it that worked out just fine. Um, currently, uh, that Kasabowski Rink, they are not allowing um, you know, any spectators, but they do have the Live Barn. There is this one little um situation. We did um add a game at the Burbank Rink in Reading on Martin Luther King Day on the eighteenth for um a game versus uh Rockport. And currently Burbank does allow parents of, you know, two parents per uh home participant to come to the games. You know, that's kind of out there in our community. So we could do that and do the same type of Google signup that we did for soccer in the fall, or you know, we can uh continue with our own uh current policy. I'm, I don't believe and Mike, you might be able to help me out with this. I don't believe Burbank has a live stream um ability over there. So that would be a game that they they wouldn't be able to watch. But, you know, currently, that's kind of where we are. You know, I I would say um the few phone calls that I've um or emails I've had from parents or, you know, a couple of conversations in passing, um, you know, obviously, and I and I get it a hundred percent. You know, this is a uh a difficult time and to not be able to see your kids play. Um, but when I say the main focus has been, you know, getting the kids um, you know, on the court, you know, in the rink, you know, on the um you know, around the uh in the pool. And as soon as you say that to the parents, they kind of get it. It's been, it's about their experience. To the seniors, uh, we have, I think, five seniors uh on our boys' basketball team, only one senior on our girls' basketball team. And I believe we have uh ten or eleven um seniors on the hockey team. So um, you know, we had to construct something that was um socially distant for a night for them. We certainly could probably construct something like that that would make it safe for everybody, but um you know, we could, we could talk a little bit about that if anyone had any questions. That's about where we are right now. So um kind of where we're currently, where we're going to be at the end of February. And then there is that traditional spring season, but that's um kind of down the road um after the wedge season.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Dr. Daly.
Sure, thank you. So I just want to thank you for a nice presentation. Um, and and to reflect on what you said a few moments ago, you know, I did receive an email um on behalf of about forty or so basketball parents, very well written and and communicated. As you mentioned, we gave the alternative for um live streaming from the gym and there were some technical difficulties. And to underscore, you know, our tech team, but Mr. Johnson and Mr. Lepret getting in there, rolling their sleeves up and troubleshooting Friday, Monday, Tuesday, uh, many different versions of watching this and making it work. We had success last night and I believe we're having success continued. So, you know, those parents really expressed they would love to be in person, but first and foremost, the alternative needs to be acceptable. And so we really did put our our full efforts into that the last few days and worked out some of the technical glitches um to provide that. And I think it's, you know, what I reiterated with the parents or what I said in our in our meeting the other night. First and foremost, we can't do anything with uh, you know, in-person learning for our students, for the academics. Number two, the opportunity for our students to play sports and to be out there. And then three, and it's safe to have opportunities for families and and spectators to watch sports, performing arts and any other events. We can't let a focus on number three, as important as it is, in any way jeopardize number one and number two. So I think that needs to be very clear. And I think parents understand that, uh, you know, I I I know um my children are still younger, but my cousins have kids that are seniors and they're really, really uh struggling with not being able to see the events live. But I think everyone also understands there's a lot of things we're not able to do right now. And the most important thing is that the students get the opportunity. So thank you for your efforts and for making this happen for our students. And it, you know, I think it's um important to note that if if and when, and we have had some issues where if there is a transmission in a sporting event, we very quickly contact trace, we're able to um make a decision to postpone a game without uh jeopardizing the sport, the continuation of the sport, or impacting others. So, you know, quick swift action by the the team uh by the by the principal, by the the nurse today to uh very quickly make a great decision and move forward. So I I'm I'm thrilled to know that our swift action allows the sports to continue safely. So thank you for your work.
Thank you, Dr. Daly. So I I I'm just going to add my thoughts as well and, you know, encourage other people to jump in here. I think everybody understands we've all been trying to pull in the same direction, you know, this year. And I and I really appreciate that the teachers and educators and paras and you know, Dr. Daly and, you know, the sporting people, like we've all been trying to pull in the in the same direction. Um, and I think we, it's, you know, when we're in in a red community now and there is transmission happening and, you know, more and more cases happening, the resolve is being tested a bit, you know, and and I think it's important that we all sort of stay on the same page. And I think I want to make sure people understand while everyone's looking at a vaccination and that maybe we're moving forward in in the future. If if somebody were to ask me right now, are we more likely to be back in person full-time next week, or are we more likely to not be in school next week? We are far more likely not to be in school next week. I mean, I think when you look around the community right now, you know, that's where we're at, you know, and we're trying to preserve the fragile situation that we have right now. Uh, in terms of spectators, as I see it right now, the general policy is that we don't have people in the buildings that don't need to be in the building. So if you're an educator, if you're a student, we want as many of them in the building as we can have. But the general policy is, other than that, we're not having people in the building right now because the presence of people, you know, in, you know, increases the chances of educators and students not being able to be in the building. And so to to look at spectators in the building, we either have to look at changing the general policy that we have or making an exception to that policy. I don't feel, and again, I am only one person here, but I just want to go on record and say that I don't feel we're in a position right now where we can change that general policy. I mean, we have more and more cases. We all get the emails. Every single day we get an email about positive cases in our in our schools. And while I don't believe, you know, most or, you know, any of them are happening in the schools, I think i- it's happening outside the schools. And, you know, and so I don't think we're at the point where we'll say that we're going to just let people back into the building. So then if you go to the question of, well, do we make an exception? And and I feel for the the parents of the students here, but I I feel for everybody. I mean, right now we are not having parents that are, you know, there's students that are struggling with remote learning. And their parents can't come in and meet with their teachers in person. You know, for educational reasons, you know, we're not letting them into the building. Like, one of my kids had to stay out and I couldn't go into the building to pick up their school supplies. I had to pick them up outside. I mean, I was told that maybe that's a new policy for me going forward, but I mean, generally speaking, we can't come into the buildings for educational reasons. And to start saying, well, for varsity parents of a sport, we're going to make this exception. Well, what about the kid who it's the first time they're playing a sport and the parent can't come in? What about the kid who sings or plays a trumpet or, you know, you know, is in the theater? Like, there are so many you know, valid exceptions to be made. It's very hard to make one exception and not all exceptions. And so I I would just say that I I'm I I think our policy is correct that we have right now. I don't really see a way to make an exception for just one group. I would love to have something special organized for seniors, but I don't know if it means in the gymnasium. Um, you know, beyond that, I don't know about, you know, I I don't frankly know that the school committee has control who goes into an outside arena, you know, you know, talking about hockey, but I mean, in in terms of the the North Reading schools, I mean, our our policy has been thus far that we're not letting people into the schools. And the school committee right now is not meeting in person in the school. And part of part of that is because we are in the red again and we're trying to limit the number of people in. So that is my long-winded opinion, but I I did want to say that because I think other people are saying that as well, but to an extent, the school committee has a responsibility to make some of these policies. And, you know, from from my standpoint, I think right now, our policy is if you're not needed in the building, that you're not really allowed in the building. And I just don't know that exceptions can be made for just one group. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts or would like to express their opinions about things. Hearing, not everybody agrees with me.
I actually do agree with you, Scott, a hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I I agree as well. Um, it's just, you know, I I I I'm not sure I see the, you know, I I don't see a balance between risk and reward there. So I just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me either, so.
Mr. Lepret.
Thank you. Um, I would, so I appreciate the the feedback around this question. If we um, if we can just steer it a a bit to the Monday Burbank event, certainly it is a school event. Um, you know, and I and I I feel very confident and comfortable with the decision that, you know, whatever was discussed here, that 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 that's the right thing to do. Um, I I again, I'm completely in line with saying, hey, you know what? We apply this uh rule to to the events that are on site and this is a school event, so we're going to apply the same rule. Uh, you know, granted, we're not, you know, we're not the host of the event, but it's a school event anyway. Um, but I would like to have that as part of the the next part of our discussion, just to kind of clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, and 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 I don't know what people's thoughts are on on that one. I mean, on on the Burbank, I mean, I don't remember ever making policies about what happens at a building that's not on our campus. And, you know, I don't really want to vote specifically in favor of allowing spectators into an athletic event, but I don't know that I necessarily want to vote against it. You know, a- a- at a at a facility outside of North Reading. And so that's sort of where I stand right now. Um, I don't really want to go on record and say it's okay for because again, somebody's going to look at that and just see, well, they let the hockey parents in, but not the basketball parents, you know, and but again, if the basketball team is playing at TD Garden right now, I don't think I would feel like we control what happens there. Just like if they play in a in in a tournament outside of North Reading, I don't know that we control that. And I understand it's a home game officially, but it's not on our campus. So I don't know what other people think. I'll I'll turn it over to Mr. McGowan for his thoughts. So I don't know what other people think. I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. McGowan for his thoughts. His hand is raised.
Well, it just, it just seems to me a couple of things. You know, first of all, if they're going to, if they're, if they're saying they are willing to allow a limit of two parents per student, I think that's what, uh, Mr. Johnson said, um, you know, that's up to us to determine how that's going to work. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, I, I still think that's within the purview of our policy making, especially in these circumstances. I mean, I agree if it were, because I think what there's, what the Rink is saying is it's not open to the public. It's open to a select group that ultimately we're the ones who are going to determine who that select group is or if, or if they're going to be allowed to come in. So I, I would feel more, it sounds like I would feel more comfortable than you proactively, you know, just saying, you know, that, 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 that facility would be included in our policy.
Janine?
I'd have to, oops, sorry. I'd have to disagree with, um, Rich. Um, like you said, if it was at TD Garden, we don't control who goes there. So I'm not entirely sure why we would be able to control who goes to another place. We don't control who goes to a restaurant or who goes shopping and all that kind of stuff. The only thing that we can, um, have control over, so to speak, is how the kids behave. If they misbehave, then, you know, they're, um, how, how it's handled is through school policy. But if a parent misbehaves even at a, a function at the school, it's not up to us to discipline them. You know, obviously because we, they're not a student of North Reading. So I can't see how we would be able to tell a parent that they can or cannot go to another location, even if it is a school event.
But, but, but do you think it, do you think that would be including the school setting up a sign-up for those parents to go? I mean, that's what Mr. Johnson, I think you were, you were suggesting that would be how it would work. Isn't that what you're saying?
We, we would know who would be there and, you know, um, want to make sure that, you know, like students just don't take it as, oh, this is a one-game, I can go see my friend play. That is, you know, there's the sign-up just like we did, um, for the soccer games, which worked out pretty good, to be honest with you. You know, you know, we don't have, you know, Park Street where you can look over the fence, you know, where the, you're the visiting team, which, you know, happened a lot in the fall, but that's not going to happen either. You know, I guess I look at this, I just hope there's not a scenario that all of a sudden a parent says, can we have all of our games at Burbank now? And, you know, I'll pay for all the ice that goes there. You know, I, I think dialogue like that might already be out there. So I want to be prepared for that.
Dr. Daly?
I just wanted to bring up too, and, and Mr. Johnson and Mr. Lepret, what would the other Cal League teams say about this? And would there be any chance that a team would be concerned about participating if we had spectators? And would they also be allowed spectators? Like how would that work? How are they approaching the hockey?
My thought was for this one isolated time that it would just be, if we, if it was allowed, it would just be the North Reading parents. And if it's not allowed, I'm fine with it either way. I want everybody to know that. I'm not advocating for this one exception. Because I think everybody, uh, I think there was, um, I think Rock Court Basketball did a small senior night on their first game just so they could get it in. The only other school that I've heard that is possibly talking about two parents at a game is Triton. And they have a very big gym like us. So, um, they have that ability to spread people out and they've talked a little bit. They use the graph rank consistently like Newbury Court uses as well. So they've talked about possibly being able to do that. But that's the only school that I've heard that's even looking at it. Everyone else is a dead no, not going to happen.
Okay. So I want, I want to just kind of talk through this very quickly. So, and, and see what exactly Mr. Lepret, Mr. Johnson are looking for. So in terms of students or in, in terms of non-educators, non-students coming into the buildings, are you looking for a, any vote on spectators being allowed in the North Reading schools? I mean, we can, we can, we can put a motion on this and vote yes or no on it if you'd like it. If, if it would give you sort of, you know, you could say that you've brought it to the school committee and, and it was voted as it was. I don't think it's likely to pass from my own, my own thoughts right now. But I don't know if you would like us to take a vote on that or not.
Uh, if I could, I would offer that. I saw tonight's presentation as us providing you an update on the winter sports season. What's happening with the athletic program and sharing with you the, uh, the protocols and the standards that are in place within our current hybrid model, which allows students to attend, you know, within that, within that, that model. And I, and I respect that we don't want to damage that. We don't want anything to, uh, to hinder the situation that we're able to benefit from right now. As I would say that we shared with you and then you continue to support, um, our position on that and our, our, you know, our, our updating you on that status. Getting your feedback around the, um, one away game, I think is certainly helpful. And I'm, um, you know, respect, respectful of your position and your viewpoints on those things. And not to, uh, you know, overextend you too much. But I feel like getting your feedback around, uh, what's working and why it's working, uh, is certainly helpful. And I think maybe if it, if it comes to Dave and I kind of deciding, you know, amongst ourselves, what, what the feedback of, uh, taking it and, uh, considering the feedback that we got from this meeting, we would proceed accordingly how we felt. I, I think that's, that's a position I'm comfortable with. Uh, I'll throw that back to Dave or Dr. Daly. You know, I, I mean, I'm, I think right now, you know, especially now that the live streaming is happening, you know, parents are able to watch it a little bit. So that has kind of buffered their disappointment a little bit. I'm just concerned about, you know, all of a sudden we do one game and it's a hockey game. And all of a sudden, you know, a parent says, well, that's an off-campus site. Why don't I go rent a gymnasium and then we can all go see these games over here and that's off-site? And that could happen. You know, you could, they could say we, you know, there are, you know, other facilities that might be open, um, that we know of. So I think, um, for one time.
You know, if I could and then.
Go ahead, Dr. Jones.
I would just say if that happens and then, and then we see a spread because crowds came together when the town's in the red and we have to now talk about can the sport run? I mean, that's, that's the concern. So, you know, I, I think we need to think about the equity of this as well. And, you know, we're making a rule, it's across the board. You know, it's, it's something to think about, just being, just being fair across the board.
So I think, so we approved the winter season. The winter season we approved, no spectators at it. You know, at least in our building. That, that's what we approved, you know? There, the reality is there's going to be private, you know, there's going to be springs, spring games going on outside. There's going to be soccer. There's going to be non-school athletics that are occurring that are allowing parents there. And we can't control that. So I think for the, for the sports, sporting events in, in our buildings, I think where we've already said, we've agreed to them running, but there are no spectators there. So I don't think we need to vote to change that right now. I think we're pretty much, you know, aligned on, there's no, there's no reason for an exception just for this one. Now, I guess the specific question is, and I think Rich kind of hit on this. I think the specific question to be interpreted is whether or not our policy for no spectators would apply to an event, to an event building outside of North Reading. And so maybe the motion would be to apply the no spectator rule to a non, you know, to, to a building outside of North Reading or something like that. Because my personal opinion on this is I don't want to say yes to it, but I don't know that I have the authority to say no to it. The way I look at it is if Burbank YMCA has a policy that says two parents can come in to, to their building, I don't know that my authority as school committee, uh, school committee member applies beyond that. And, you know, I think I'm in agreement with Mrs. Imbriano that we control the students participating, but we don't necessarily control who's allowed in the building to watch the actual game. But that is just my personal opinion and I don't know. I could be dead wrong on what our, our authority is or, or not. But that, I thought about it. Um, Mrs. Imbriano, you have your hand up.
If, what I think Rich was kind of getting to and what Dave was saying, um, if hypothetically Burbank was to allow this to happen and two parents of each child go, wouldn't it be Burbank's? They would need to get those people's name for contact tracing, right? And isn't that kind of what it's coming down to?
I don't know.
It's just making sure that.
I think they might want a list from us and say, okay, you know, Dave and Judy Johnson can go see my daughter Christine play. You know, like they would have a list of who's on the roster with the names, like we did in the fall. We checked them in one at a time they came into the soccer games, maybe a list like that. I would imagine that they're going to expect that the, the administrator, the site administrator is going to have that. Right? I, I would expect that that's their expectation. I haven't spoken to the Burbank Rink, Dave. And you have not called them yet about, other than knowing that they have a, their two, two-parent minimum, two-parent maximum? Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, you know, what they've been told. And they, they, they even went to, you know, recharging admission. I was like, well, I don't think we're going to do that. But, um, you know, I, I, I think, um, and like I said, I, I, I'm fine either way with this, you know? If we, if we want to say right now, we're going to hold a fight and it's just going to be, you know, nobody at any event because, um, you know, like, you know, Scott, like you said, you know, we're, we're red, we're close to remote. Who knows? You know, like is this, is this, you know, is this going to tip it over? You know, uh, and is this going to cause ill feeling between parents of different sports and then coming back? You know, is it really worth it? I don't know.
I would just.
Chris, or sorry, Rich?
Sort of. Well, I'll, I'll be quiet in a sec, but I would just bring it back to, you know, we're working so hard just to keep kids in school. And, and, you know, if, if, if one group of kids has to miss in-person classes because of a case in, in, that a parent comes in with, it's just, it doesn't feel like for that one exception, it's really worth, but, um, you know, I, I guess. I, I, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that we can have, have the authority to, to say what we want, need to say here. So.
Well, I could, I could offer this. We, um, we have proms at private function places and we say parents are not allowed. It's a school event and we're not, it's not open to the parents. I think, you know, I don't see what the great difference is in that, in that sense.
It's not open to the public.
It's just an event for the students.
Yeah. So I, I personally would feel comfortable positively affirming that the policy applies to that game as well.
Other thoughts? So do we want to, you want to put a motion to? Do you want to put a motion on, on Rich to either apply it there or to specifically say that we don't want to allow spectators at any North Reading sporting events, even if the.
I can do that. I, first of all, I don't know if Chris or, or Diana wanted that, say anything before I come up with a motion, but.
I'm happy to share my thoughts. I, I kind of, I agree with the fact that, um, I don't feel like, just as I don't have, I know this is high school sports and part of the schools, I don't have control over, you know, youth sport. You know, I think about my son playing flag football through the pandemic. My daughter goes to dance four times a week. He goes into school for cohort A, so, um, I don't feel like I have any say to dictate something outside of school grounds. I 100% agree with the, the policy that we've made at the school to try to protect our schools and keep our schools, keep the virus at our school and to protect our teachers. But with this, I think, you know, I can't, I can't really say, um, that I feel like I should be controlling and telling people what, you know, if Burbank is open to it, Burbank's open to it.
I, I, I tend to agree with, uh, Rich and Scott in a personal level of, of, of thinking that I, on a personal level, I prefer that, uh, that these events don't have more people than, than necessary to them. We're in a, a very heightened state of this pandemic. And I agree that the big issue here for me is, uh, in what's the extent of our authority and how hard we'd want to shape it. But, um, I, I think that these are school events, even if they're off school ground. Unless, um, we have a precedent of being able to weigh in a bit on those. So I, uh, I tend to agree with Rich's perspective on this.
Okay. Sounds like we have one for a motion and one for a second at least. So, do we have Mr. McGowan make a motion?
Sure. I move that the committee vote to, uh, to, the, the committee vote to, uh, affirm that the policies in place for in-school athletic events apply to, uh, athletic events that occur in facilities outside of the school.
I will second that.
Okay. Is there further discussion on this? Janine?
This is it, Mr. Lepret. There's not a specific policy telling parents that they cannot attend prom. It's just been over the ages, prom is for the students, it's held at a different location. Parents are not welcome, correct?
Is there, is it policy?
It sounds like it's your policy.
Yeah, well, yeah, I would say that we, right, we, our policy is driven, is driven from, from the school committee. It is our practice, absolutely. It is our long sustained practice. I, I would say that, uh, short of, short of, you know, grabbing the book, which I can do that real quick and, and file through there, I would say it is, again, I have every confidence in saying that, that it's our, it is our sustained practice that school events that are off-campus are bound to the rules of the handbook as we apply them. Internally, we have language in the, in the handbook that says steps may be taken to ensure that there's student safety with respect to the coronavirus. And that's, that's in the handbook and that's absolutely policy. So I'm, I'm comfortable kind of landing in that place. I, I, I hope that answers your question.
It kind of does. Um, I guess, are we making this policy on this one game? Or are we trying to move it forward for any other one that's coming up? I would be more for it if it was this one specific incident more over than any coming up. If that makes any sense.
I, I mean, yeah, that's a good question. I, um, we were just thinking about this one incident. Um, and I also, you know, this is really a tricky thing because the, a negative vote on this policy does not necessarily override, whatever deci, final decisions that Dr. Daly and Mr. Lepret and Mr. Johnson make themselves, I don't think. Because we're not making a policy that says you have, you know, I think if you, if you feel like it's within your bounds to not allow parents into that game, I, I, I just, it just doesn't seem like that difficult a thing to imagine that we can control this, Scott. I, I, Scott, I, I, I guess I just not sure I understand this being a school event in a non-public space, because it's not a public, I mean, the building is a public building, but it's not open to the public. It's open to who we say can come in.
But if, so if, I don't think anybody would question if we have a, if there's a football game being held outside, we can't stop somebody from standing by the fence and watching it, you know, and.
We can stop someone from entering the facility.
Okay, but if, if, if at Burbank, we are renting the ice face, I don't know that that means we control who can be in that building at the time.
But isn't Burbank saying, if, if you want to allow two per, up to two parents per participant into the building, we will allow that. But they're not saying you have to allow two parents into the building. They're saying that they're willing to do that, but it's up to us to control who comes into the building. I can't just walk up and say I'm a parent and, and walk into the building.
Could I, could I comment for a second?
Go ahead, Dr. Daley.
Please. So my suggestion would be, you know, I put this on the agenda this evening. I, I wanted to have the discussion. I think, as we mentioned earlier, that the live streaming option is working and people have been happy with that. In, in some ways, you know, I, I think bringing to a vote is a good thing we could do, but I, I I had hoped for the discussion. I hoped for it to be public and for us to be able to reflect. But ultimately, i- if there's a way for this to, for Mr. Lepret, Mr. Johnson and I to make decisions moving forward, right now, I think you've decided that it's not safe. We're still in the red as a town. We're not having spectators in, but if things were to change and there was a possibility of doing something, we'd want to be able to, to bring that forward as well. And I, I don't want it to be necessarily one size fits all for all these different circumstances. But I think, you know, I think we have to make a judgment based on whether any inequity is going to cause more of a disruption to, again, the primary goal of in-person learning, the secondary goal of students being able to participate in sports. We don't want the tail to wag the dog here and have anything jeopardize those kids getting to play in their sports and competitions. And so it may be best, just based upon all the discussion, that the, the decision kind of comes back to the administration to make a decision. I don't know if that makes sense.
I think that's right. And that's why I was really hesitating as I, as you were, Scott, you were suggesting that I make a motion because I, because I don't, I don't think, I think the last thing we want to do is tie your guys' hands in a way that, that, that causes problems down the road. So I'm, so Scott, I don't know if you want to respond to.
Well, do I withdraw? Well, again, I mean, I, I think the policy that you made was a little bit overly broad and, and again, I don't think we want to say that nothing ever applies and, and what it applies to. And again, I think we're at fundamental disagreement about the extent of the authority. And, and it brings me back to when we tried to, you know, when there was a suggestion about in the handbook regulating off-campus parties, you know, outside of it. And again, it's just, how far does the reach of the school go?
Right, but, but I think, I think, and I, and I just feel like for a school-sponsored and a school-run event, it goes, it goes that far.
No, I, I, I understand and, and I'm saying.
And I, and I get the feeling that Dr. Daley and Mr. Lepret and Mr. Johnson do, although maybe you guys can disagree if you, if you think I'm wrong. But it, it's a school event, I mean.
And, and again, and my, I, I would be fine if we withdraw the motion because I don't know that I want, I mean, it sounds like there might be three votes that say we don't necessarily think that the school can restrict Burbank from allowing people in. And again, I'm not, I'm, I'm very much on the fence on this one, to be perfectly honest. Like, I think we're all in agreement, not in the North Reading buildings right now. We have an agreement on that. I would be fine with, you know, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Lepret, Dr. Daley making a decision on, you know, along with Burbank about, you know, what should happen there and not having us there, because I mean, the school committee doesn't weigh in on a lot of things outside of.
Yeah.
You know, out of there. And so I, I'd be fine with that. I just.
I, I guess I would just affirm my own feeling that, that to the extent that it's possible, I would, I would want that policy to apply to that game as well. But yeah, I, I agree that it may be, makes the most sense to withdraw that motion and I'm perfectly willing to do that. I don't know if there's a particular procedure for that at this stage of the motion, but I, I, whatever that procedure is, I, I.
Withdraw the motion. Yeah. Well, we'll assume the motion is withdrawn. There we go. Okay, other comments. Dr. Daley, Mr. Lepret, Janine, whoever. Dr. Daley, your hand's highest on my list here, so.
Yeah, Mr. Lepret, maybe you had yours first. Sorry, if you want to.
Thank you. So I would just say, you know, something that I feel very comfortable and confident in saying is that knowing that we've been as successful to maintain our hybrid model as long as we have, and that I can speak to having a very close understanding and confident approach in our cleaning, in our protocols, who's on campus, who's allowed on campus, what the cohorts are. I can go to data, I can go to, you know, charts and, and categories and I cannot do that at the Burbank. It's still a school event. I can't speak to how often they clean in certain areas or with respect to the air filter that's running through that system and, and those type of things. I know our facility. So if that's a little bit more information to kind of bring, you know, just put in the back of our minds again, I cannot speak to how confident I feel about what that happens, what happens at the Burbank. And, and, you know, it certainly helps shape my decision-making, not that it defines my decision, but it helps shape it.
Well, I, I will, I will just comment on this one and then I think we can possibly move on, but there's no motion on the table. I think, I, I don't think anybody was saying that we think it's a great idea for parents to show up there. That's not what we're, people are saying here. I think what people are saying is does the school committee want to take the stance of trying to regulate who is in the building at an off-campus event? And that's where I have a concern about, you know, an extension of our policy of saying that we're allowing, we're allowing or not allowing people into a building that's off-campus. And so that, that is my concern. It's not, and I don't want, I don't want educators, I don't want anybody to misconstrue what we're saying here. I'm not saying we want people going to games or not going to games. I'm just saying, I don't know that it's, I don't feel like it's our purview to say, because again, there could be five different rinks or five different ice rinks in the same building, you know, and I don't think we can define who's there, who's not there. And so right now, there's no motion on the table. Mrs. Imbriano, do you have any? I know you raised your hand again.
Yeah, I can't tell when it's white. My hand is up.
White is up.
Black is down, so, okay, so I'm taking my hand down. But what I wanted to say is we've given the administration a lot of flexibility to have fluid changes to the calendar. I guess we could probably just give them the same fluidity to apply, you know, no spectators at a school event, be it prom, be it an outside athletic facility, much to what Mr. Lepret said, hey, we, we don't know what your cleaning status is. So, yeah, I mean.
And they have that.
Really want to put that out there type thing. So I would just like to give the administration the ability to say, you know, hey, they're offering, but we don't think it's a good idea. And then.
Yeah, and I think they have that.
I'll just say one thing perhaps in closing, but I, I think the elephant in the room too is that you may be at your, at your younger child's hockey practice, in the rink, in the rent, and then an hour later, your high school player comes in and, and you're not able to be there. And that's, that's a difficult scenario and we're all aware of that. But I think again, what the administration will do, as we've continued to do, is we'll make a decision in the best interest of the students. As much as we value parents and spectators being able to participate, if we feel that that in any way could jeopardize any of our, our students being able to participate, then we'd make that decision. So I think, you know, it was good to have this discussion, but I think we are equipped to, to make the best decisions moving forward in the best interest of the kids. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, and, and we would love to see the seniors honored in some way. I just don't know that it'll be in the building at a game. Perhaps there could be something else outside or, you know, a parade or, or something else that could be done. Okay, we'll close this non-discussion or not, non-vote. We have, so Dr. Daley, would you like to go back to the continued business first or, or continue with the new business? Allow your choice.
Yeah, dealer's choice. We, we should, why don't we get through some of these items on the, on the list? If we do, if we do the calendar update, some of the quick hits maybe and.
Calendar updates, go ahead.
I think, Dr. Daley, can I excuse myself? I'm going to try and get down to the swim meet. It's right around the corner from my house for just a few minutes. So is anyone need to pour anything more or can I leave?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Great job tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks again for, for affording me some time to showcase what's going on at the high school.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Great presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, AJ.
Okay, Dr. Daley.
Thank you so much. So it's a, it's a brief update to the calendar. I wanted to share it and I wanted to be able to share with the community soon after, but our, we are scheduled to have a professional development day on January 27th, which is a Wednesday. That currently is listed in the, in the calendar. Because the high school is looking to introduce another opportunity for students to take the SAT on Tuesday, April 12th, we will amend the calendar that elementary only would have the January 27th half-day. That's already a Wednesday half-day for elementary. Secondary would have a regular day of school. And then in, in the, on the April date, only the, only the high school and middle school would have that as a half-day. And again, it needs to be a half-day because students would be taking the SAT on campus, utilizing all of the spaces where students would, would have lunch and whatnot. So we could not have lunches in the second half of school. So we figured that would be a better day to have the half-day and, and make this work. This is similar to what we did in the fall. And I just wanted to put that forward as a, as an update. I believe we've voted these types of changes in the past, but I, I just wanted to bring it forward.
Excellent. So yeah, why, why don't we just vote on this just to clarify, which I'd like to make, well, I, I will entertain a motion to amend this, the 2020, 2021 school calendar to change January 27th to a half-day for elementary only and a full day for middle, high school. And also to change Tuesday, April 13th to a half-day for middle and high school only, but a full day for elementary.
So moved, just like you said it.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
And an aye as well, 5-0. Thank you. COVID pool testing, Dr. Daley.
Sure. So I will maybe just give an overall COVID update along with this. So we are, you know, as, as was mentioned earlier, we have seen a rising cases in the community, which is then reflected in the town, I'm sorry, in the schools. We have seen close to almost 30 high school students who tested positive since December 18th. Nearly all of those students were not in school. So these are students that were impacted during the break. I think what we've seen is our decision to have those days before the holiday in remote, have paid dividend, that we couldn't have even predicted insofar as not having to contact trace over the holidays and, and folks staying out. So that, that really has proved beneficial and, and it ended up being a, a good decision for that. There have been some cases in schools and we're continuing to see a very low amount of transmission. And I'll be upfront to say that, you know, I was saying zero, I can't, I can't confidently say zero transmission because as these cases increase, you know, if there's a case where there's a sibling or there is a, a close friend who's a contact outside of school and in class, you know, but out of the 63 or so cases we've had, there have been two or three where there's been some further investigation in, in school transmission. So I would still say low, very low transmission in school, which again, is, is the key indicator that schools would not be safe. When I meet regularly with the public health nurse, the director of public health, they say, not only are they saying that schools are safe, they're saying kids are safer in schools. Because where they're seeing the rise in cases is when folks are home in small gatherings where they are, you know, without masks perhaps, or just everyone there is asymptomatic. Everyone feels great, everyone's comfortable, and then someone tests positive and all of a sudden, everybody else tests positive. So they, they are still reinforcing that schools are the safest place to be for our kids. And, and I think we continue to do that. Overall, the numbers at the elementary school and our staff numbers are still very low. So I don't know if there are any other questions about COVID in general before I went into the testing.
I don't have any. I, I think the one, only thing I'll say is I appreciate, it seems like the parents did heed the rules and, and the, you know, getting testing if they did travel. Because the number of students that tested positive when they were out of school and never came back to school, it seems to indicate that when people did travel or whatever, that they did the testing, if they had a symptom, they stayed out. And that's a, that is a good sign that people, you know, followed the precautions in place so that there are very few people, students that were in the school, so.
Yeah, I would say absolutely. We've had good compliance and, and a lot of good questions. I can't, I can't say enough about our nurses and what they've done and our public health nurse as well to, to stay on top of the, the growing number. It's, it's exhausting. And as the numbers increase, you can only imagine how much more work this is for everyone. They've done a great job with that. And the principals and, and everyone as well. So, you know, I did address through a, a high school presentation, because of the rising numbers of students, Mr. Lepret hosted a call on Tuesday evening. I thought we had a, a great discussion with parents that was recorded and that audio from that recording was shared out along with a message that just reiterated again, how important it is to stay focused. I think everyone is, is, you know, if they weren't already, the, the exhaustion of just COVID related everything and, and, but this is not the time to, to give up. This is the time to, to double down and move forward and continue to practice those behaviors that are safe. And to continue our hybrid model is, this was a little too earlier. We, we are certainly looking at rising numbers in town. We want to make sure that these buildings are safe for our staff and students. And we want our students to be as successful as they were able to showcase tonight. I still believe strongly that, you know, opportunities for in-person learning through our hybrid model is the best for our students and we want to try to preserve that. And we're working very closely with our, our teachers association, who've been fantastic throughout this to maintain that. And there was an article in the newspaper today from Mr. Kane, who is our, our union leader of the NREA. And I think his message is similar to the message I delivered this week in that we all have to work together to ensure that we have, have the best possible scenario for our staff and students. So one of the things that is very much on everyone's mind is still the testing and the vaccinations. At this time, I don't have any additional information about vaccinations. I hope to have more to share very soon about that, but I, I can share that the town has been running some clinics for those in phase one and school nurses were included in phase one, which I think is great for those individuals and also sets us up well for the future for what we might need to do to prepare in the future. Our nurses being out ahead of that and having their vaccinations. So the, the first round of those have, have been successfully administered. The, the testing, so the Binax Now testing that I've spoken about before, a couple of things have changed for the positive with that. One is that if you recall, if you tested positive or negative with the Binax Now rapid test, you needed to get a second test. They have now said that the, the validity of the test, and I'm probably using the term incorrectly, but the test is such that if you test positive on Binax Now, you can assume that you're positive and you can just immediately begin the treatments and there's not a need for a follow-up test. So that's, that's another reassurance of the success of that test in, in, in various studies that have been exhibited. The kits have been received. We have been approved. Dr. Daley and myself, I am now a laboratory director, which is something I told my parents that I didn't think they ever expected me to be. So, you know, we are, we have done the groundwork and completed all the paperwork. We have the standing order from Dr. Tremontosi. The kits have arrived. Our nurses are being trained. And the next step now, we'll be sharing the next several days of the consent forms for staff and students. That again is for symptomatic students and staff only, and that's how that would be used. The next opportunity I wanted to talk about tonight, and basically what I'm, what I'm asking for is your, your approval for us to pursue as a district. The next opportunity I wanted to talk about tonight, and basically what I'm, what I'm asking for is your, your approval for us to pursue as a district pool testing. So very quickly, what pool testing is, it, it would be PCR testing, um, but it's very, it's cost prohibitive uh, to test everybody and to get samples back on every individual. So what pool testing does is it would take a group of students or a group of staff in a pool. Everyone, let's say this entire committee submitted a sample, but it gets one test. So if one person out of the group is positive, everyone then would act and react as if they were on a quarantine until there's a follow-up test that can um, just determine who the actual positive person is and who would be negative. Okay. And what, what's being said now is the binax now test that we do have um, available to us can be used as that second test with results within 15 minutes. So in large districts, we had a presentation earlier this week, Salem, Medford, Watertown. Um, they're seeing across their schools, uh, I believe they said like a point two um, percentage of, of these pools that are coming back positive. So it's not driving numbers through the roof. It's not changing all those numbers, but what it's doing is it's, uh, you know, helping folks to bring that anxiety level down and to have regular testing to, to just know who are the asymptomatic carriers and who's not. And for everyone to breathe a bit of a sigh of relief. So the, the teachers union certainly stands by this. It's something we discussed back in negotiations as testing becomes available, we wanted to at least explore it. So, um, you know, the goals obviously would be to make sure that this is effective. There's a lot of logistics to this. It would be time for the nurses, time out of, you know, school to do testing. From what these other districts have said, it's, it's a fairly quick process. Um, the, the nurses are able to, to, to do it and test a classroom, let's say, um, of 10 students who's there on a cohort day, takes about five minutes. Sometimes it's done during a mass break. Um, quick swab of the nose and then those samples are collected. But there is a logistical piece to this. Collecting those samples, sending them off, gathering the information, doing the contact tracing. Um, and there's a lot to consider. So there's a, there's a resource consideration. There's a cost consideration. It's not, uh, inexpensive to do this, but the, what has happened through the stimulus funds, the state of Massachusetts would cover this for the first six weeks. And then if we were to continue it after that, there would be a cost to the district, which we would explore as a part of this study. So we would want to see what the, you know, the, really what is the, the plus delta of this experience? What are the costs? What are the logistics and the resources? I would most likely be reallocating resources of a district administrator to really head this up. Because there is quite, you know, with 2,500 students to try to do this correctly. But other districts are pursuing it. Our union has asked us to look into it. And I, I think it is the right thing to do for us to, to at least do our due diligence, to attend the webinars, to get more information, to figure out the costs and to see what that looks like next. So I'm happy with any questions um, from you.
Okay. Any questions? Dr. Daley, the only question I would ask is, so just to be, be clear then for pool testing, even if there was 20 people, cause I think it's a 10 to 25 samples, even if there was 20 samples, the idea is that any one sample could make the whole, should make the whole test negative or, or positive, excuse me? If there was one positive amongst 20?
That's, that's my understanding. Um, and then you would immediately start to get those, that second round to, you know, so you could take precautions with those folks and then immediately start to, um, to go to the next level. I don't see that that, you know, and, and I'll clarify this. I don't think that that puts our numbers, I don't think we report all those people as being positive, but we would, you know, our behaviors would adjust to, to make sure that we've addressed those folks. Um, and then we've done, you know, some of the other towns said they'd do something like a, a quick drive up clinic for that second, uh, test to see whether, you know, you, you are actually confirmed as a, as a positive. Um, so it's, it's much more cost effective and, and plausible. It's, it's really not, uh, a possibility to test every single person regularly. But this is something that is possible and it's been highly successful in these districts.
Janine, you put your hand down. Did you have a question?
I did. Um, but he kind of answered it. Cause it seems like you can do just the individual testing at the school or you can do the pool. And then have, if it comes back one out of the 10 or two out of the 10 positive, have them, um, checked out again, right?
Exactly. So if, if, if anyone came, if anyone in the pool comes back positive, if the whole pool comes back positive, we would make, take an action with that group. But then we could, is my understanding, uh, do the rapid test and be, begin to, um, to, to let people back in, I would assume if they're not positive with that. Uh, again, I need more detail and more clarification, but that is how it was presented to us the other day. So we're still at the very early stages of investigating this, but that would be the advantage.
Rich?
Have you had a chance to think about, or have they talked about how frequently you could test the whole population? Is it something that could be done every three or four weeks or, or, or do we not know that yet?
Uh, it's, it's frequent and regular and I, I just, I don't want to give the wrong answer. I'm still trying to understand best. They would work with us with our local town, with our numbers, with our cohorts, the number of students in person and the metric for the town to determine whether that initial pool should be five, 10, 20. Um, you can have the pools be larger, but obviously they want to work within the, the current metrics because you don't want, um, you don't want the, you, you want the test coming back negative, right? You don't want uh, the, the numbers to be, to be positive because of the numbers in town. So I think that's something we were working. But the idea is that it would be, uh, pretty frequent and pretty regular. I think there are weekly, bi-weekly tests now in some of the other districts is, is my understanding, but I want to, um, you know, I, I want to verify all that. And I, I don't know a hundred percent what it would look like for us at this stage, but it would be, you know, definitely a calming and comforting thing for those that would want to participate. There would certainly be opt-in, opt-out options for everyone. It just is with our other tests, um, as well. But that would be our, um, you know, part of the learning that we would do in the next few weeks.
Uh, if, if nothing else, we get taken, uh, go on a little offense instead of playing defense all the time, I guess. That's one way to think of it.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I agree. I agree with the idea of it. Um, I mean, it's not, it's not mandatory. It's if you want to do it, um, it is a pain in the butt to get testing. Um, I mean, I had to do it, you know, when I came back from holidays as well. And you know, if we can make it more convenient, our teachers in particular, I'm thinking about because our teachers are, you know, coming to school every day to try to educate our children and you know, as everybody knows, a lot of students don't even show symptoms. And so if, you know, teachers wanted to get it and every week they could get it or whatever it is, um, you know, and if it's just a quick way to do it and you can, you know, have a hundred people tested with 10 tests, I, I think it's great. I think it's a great opportunity to go forward. The only negative would be the cost of it after the six weeks, but hopefully after six weeks, we'll have vaccinations for all the teachers that need them as well. So, um, I think it's a great thing to pursue. I think what Dr. Daley is looking for is a motion to approve the district taking the next step in the exploration of COVID-19 pool testing. So I would entertain a motion, um, for that.
Uh, I will make the motion that the committee vote to, uh, uh, have the superintendent move forward with the next steps on the pool testing.
Okay. Any further discussion? And we'll go through Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero. Thank you very much. And Dr. Daley, is it fair to say that that covers the reopening update from the continued business as well?
I, I, I was assuming so, yes.
Great. I can check that off as well on my list here. For the few people that stuck with us, you know, you get the exciting world of policies with Ginny and Embriano. This is Embriano. Would you like to move forward with the policies?
Okay. I'm just going to pull them up so that I can read the motion appropriately.
I have one comment on GAE by the way. Well, technically two comments.
Well, do you want to comment while I'm getting it pulled up?
Sure. The, the first comment is just it, it, it talks about committee capitalized, but it never says school committee in it. The other policy starts with the school committee the first time, then it refers to the committing. And so uh, again, I, I would, I would just put school committee the first time it's used. And then in the third paragraph, it says that maybe taken by either party to, says appeal may be taken by either party to a committee appointed by the chairman of the committee. I mean, I guess it would technically be a subcommittee, right? Or would it be a, would it be a separate committee? I, I think it would be a subcommittee, not a committee later on. So I would suggest using school committee the very first time, um, and I would suggest in the third paragraph that we just call it a subcommittee.
Well, if, if I'm remembering correctly, and for whatever reason, I'm not getting my phone working, is, um, this is to take it out of the hands of the school committee and into the hands of the administration.
Correct.
Dr. Daley, okay. Um, so you're saying we just need to specify that
Well, just like
out of the school committee?
Well, just, just
the committee.
Just the committee. I mean, it says committee, not, I, I just think it should say school committee. The first time we use the capitalized C committee. I think it's just make sure we say school committee. The other policies do that. This one just
Yeah, I can make that adjustment. Yeah.
And then in the third, and just in the third paragraph, when it says appeal may be taken by either party to a committee appointed by the chairman of the committee. I just think the, the chairman would appoint a subcommittee, correct?
Well, I guess that's the question. Is it, is it meant to be a committee, a subcommittee of the, of the, of the school committee or a, or a committee consisting of something else? I'm just, you know, I'm not sure what, what it's trying to say.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure either. That's why I was like, I, I was, I was assuming it as a subcommittee, but I don't know. Like, do I just appoint whomever I want or if I'm the chair? I mean, like, I, I just don't know who that, what that committee is or that subcommittee is.
I, I guess we can assume at the moment that it's just meant to be a subcommittee of, of, of us.
It is, because you know, that's something we can, we can clarify. I mean, I just want to make sure we're following the, the regulations. So.
So, yeah. So we just call out a subcommittee and put school and a, a school committee for the first time we use committee in this, then I am fine with this policy.
Okay. There we go. Let's see.
Did I stall long enough for you, Janine?
Actually, I don't know why. Okay. Yeah, I got it. Sorry about that. I don't know why I wasn't able to pull it up as quickly as I normally do. All right. So I need to make the motion. I lied. It took a little bit longer. Sorry. All right. So. Um, I make the motion to approve the revised reading of the policy GAE and to keep the tracked changes as delineated in the document.
Hi, second?
With the amendment of the school committee.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Second to that motion.
And subcommittee. Yeah. Um, okay. Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised reading of the policy GCH and to keep the tracked changes as delineated in the document.
Chris, you want a second?
Yeah, sorry. I thought, I didn't realize I was muted. Yeah, second.
You're welcome Cindy. So, uh, Janine, uh, would we roll call vote? Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero. Thank you.
And lastly on the policies, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised reading of policy KN and to keep the track changes as delineated in the document.
Second?
Any discussion? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero.
Oh, and just kidding. There's one more.
And the second, the next one is the, the second reading, right?
Yeah, yeah. All right. Um, I'd like to make a motion to move to eliminate the follows, following policies. GAA-A dash R, JCA dash R and JCAD dash R as they are redundant to the policies of ABBA dash R1 and ABBA dash R2.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero passes. Thank you. Superintendent Search Committee. I got excited. I mean, I mean worried when I saw this on here, but.
Yeah, I believe, uh, the, the transcript called us as well to make sure that there wasn't some news they were missing. So hopefully this is about to span.
Yes, um, Rich and I successfully finished our last meeting of the superintendent search, which hired, um, Dr. Daley that we're very grateful for. And, um, it was recommended through the town clerk that we asked to have the, uh, subcommittee disbanded as it was the appointment of the school committee to have us there in the first place.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to disband the superintendent search committee?
I certainly would.
Okay. That's your motion, I guess.
So moved, yes.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Uh, roll vote. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero.
Perfect.
You're stuck with us, Patrick. Okay. The North Shore Education Consortium. Uh, Dr. Daley, would you like to comment on this at all or make any discussion? I saw we, we all got a copy of this. Dr. Daley, are you on mute?
I was on mute. Sorry about that. Each year we, uh, you know, I'm, I'm appointed to the, the board of directors for the, the, there's two items here tonight that are similar for Sposim Collaborative and the, uh, North Shore. And this is, uh, one of the, the duties is to bring forth the annual report and share with you, um, this information as well. And so, you know, we do have some students that participate. They, they receive, um, wonderful services from these programs and the, the amount of, um, that we pay in tuition is obviously reduced because we're a part of the program. So at this time, I'm just sharing with you as, as is one of the legal requirements, the FY, um, 20, the 1920 annual report for the North Shore Consortium.
Were there any questions in the annual report that anybody had for Dr. Daley? Janine, I know you read it cover to cover. Any, any, any errors you found?
No, no, I didn't find any errors.
Wonderful. And we'll move on to the Seem Collaborative. Anything you'd like to say about that, Dr. Daley?
Uh, in the same respect, this is a, a wonderful group that we belong to. They not only, uh, provide programs for students, but a lot of, uh, job alikes that are special education leaders, curriculum leaders, assistant superintendent. Uh, we participate in, uh, through them and, and we do have our, um, our common position, we have our UDL mentor that we do with the job share among multiple districts. So it's, it's a lot of benefits to being a part of this collaborative. And this is their, um, 2019, 20 annual report that we shared tonight.
And any comments or questions on this? Mr. Janine?
Yes, they put John Bernard and Patrick Daley as. So I was wondering why, where you should have been here long enough just to be listed by yourself.
So this is from last, this is from 1920. So
Okay.
So for John's piece of it.
I can't.
We were both, uh, yeah, we were both in there.
See, I did read it.
Yeah, I did recently, um, I had my one year anniversary, January 2nd. So it's, but, uh, but Tom was here for the first part of that, that, uh, fiscal year.
I did note that too. Okay. Excellent. Moving on, the NREA side letter agreement. Do we need a vote to approve the side letter agreement? Um, perhaps Dr. Daley can explain, maybe show what this is?
Sure. I have, um, I'm going to share my screen here. This is essentially an update, um, that would take us through the end of this school year. We are negotiating a new contract at which time we would review this for inclusion in the contract. It's really just extending the, the, uh, bereavement leave to to also include the loss of a child or children due to miscarriage or stillbirth. The teachers would be intended, entitled up to five days for this loss. And it's, it's just, you know, I, I said it earlier that this is just, the question for me is, you know, what kind of environment do I want to work in? What kind of community do I want to be a part of? And I think when folks suffer this loss, it's, it's very much a tragic loss for, for the, the family. And I think to extend this benefit is something that is, is, is well deserved. And so I, I would propose that, for your consideration, this amendment to the N R E A contract to allow bereavement in these circumstances.
Any comments or questions? Hi, Janine?
Just as I kind of expressed earlier, is my sister had multiple miscarriages and she actually had almost a stillbirth. And like I said, it's never easy. It doesn't matter if it's in the first trimester, second trimester, if you've carried all the way to the third trimester. So my heart goes out that this even has to be a thing, but I, I fully back it.
I also fully support the policy. I think the loss of any child at whatever age is, is very devastating. And so if, if a parent or a parent to be needs some extra time, I think that's, you know, that, that's a good thing to give. And so our teachers are working very hard right now. And, you know, I, I think this is a very small accommodation that I think we should absolutely vote in favor of. Okay, there's no more comments, I see. But can I entertain a motion to modify the N R E A collective bargaining agreement, I guess, to add the side letter agreement?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move that the committee vote to, to approve this side letter agreement with N R E A.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, passes five zero. Thank you very much. Now we move on to the minutes. And I think we have once out of minutes here. Miss Embriana, would you like, Mrs. Embriana, would you like to lead us in the minutes?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of, I want to say it was December.
Tenth.
Tenth, thank you. I did read over them, I just didn't remember the date on the top, to accept them as written.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. That was the only one we had, right? Budget update, Mr. Connolly?
Great, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So in your packet this evening was the financial budget report, which reflects activity through the end of December. Not a lot of new information from the previous report. I think a lot of the, the drivers and, and factors at play on both the expense side of the, the books and the payroll side of the books continue to be the same as previous reports. You know, despite everything that we've had to, uh, uh, deal with this year with, with the pandemic and the certainly new costs and, and new expenses and, and upgrades and, and everything that we've had to address from a technology standpoint and from a facility standpoint and from a health and sanitation standpoint. We still continue to be, and as you can see by the report, I, I, you know, halfway through the fiscal year and in solid financial standing. We have certainly leveraged all of the federal grants and CARES Act money with the municipal side in the town as, as much as possible. And we have certainly worked closely with town officials, Elizabeth Work and Michael Gilberto, to share the, the municipal side of the CARES Act funding. We were able to receive about an additional fifty thousand from that allotment. And we made good use of that and, and certainly, you, you spent our, our share of that, of that money. So we had certainly put the plans in place through the beginning of the year that these funds, as was originally presented to us, would expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty. On, of course, on December twenty ninth, the, the federal, they just, the state decided to extend that, those deadlines. And it'll just allow more flexibility for, for you to spend some of, of, of these, these funds. But we, we had already kind of put, at that point in, in time, we had already kind of put our plans and our spending plans in place and, and processed all of our invoices and actually sent everything into the, into the town for submission into their reimbursement requests. And we had already essentially almost closed out our large piece of that equation, which was the reopening grant at that point. So we had already kind of made, made our adjustments that we needed to make and had, had, had spent the money. So essentially, we're, we're still working with the original timeline. And that's okay, because we've, we've made those adjustments. And we now have shifted things that needed to be shifted, positions and expenses to, to the general fund for the remaining of the year. And the report that this evening kind of reflects those changes. So I, I think we're, we're in, in solid financial standing. We've certainly did everything we could with, with making use of these funds. There's a good chance we could see a, a new allotment of funds. I think we're expecting that. We don't know the amount of what that will be. We have a good idea that it could be in the range of like, of two hundred thousand dollars, based on what we've heard from the commissioner's office. But we have to kind of wait to see, to see what that will be. We, we're still waiting for the final number and, and how that will work. But we do expect that timeline to be extended all the way through to the end of next year. So that, that's good information. And if you look on the report, again, there is some, you know, certainly, we, we certainly did, did a lot of things on the, on the, and certainly purchasing P P E equipment and, and making HVAC upgrades and, and all, everything that we did, did do is, has been accounted for. And on the payroll side, there's some balances in certain line items reflected in the administration line, for example, is related to some of the delay in some of the appointments this year. The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning and, and some other factors are, have led to a balance in that account. Special education transportation line, you may notice, has, has a balance. That's just, there's some less, less hours from our drivers. Just with, you know, less students being transported and so forth has, has led to a balance. And, but overall, I think our, our, you know, payroll projections is, is, are in line with, with what we expected, despite all the uncertainty. And on the expense side, I think because of some of the, the items we addressed at the end of fiscal twenty, with, you know, we did prepay some special education tuitions and we did do some things to try to help the revolving accounts. I do think we are in, in, in solid financial standing. The biggest area that I've been saying of uncertainty, I think that continues, is some of the revolving account balances and, and the subsidy accounts that do work to offset our, our general fund. And that's the athletic revolving, food service revolving, transportation, full day kindergarten in pre-K. So certainly, there's no surprise that those revolving revenue this year is, is less. Just due to a variety of factors, less students riding the bus, less students, obviously, participating in sports due to some of those sports not, not running this year. And then the full day kindergarten tuition was reduced somewhat and, and so forth. So we are certainly, I think, in, in good standing to absorb that loss of revenue. And I think with the projected balance that's reflected on the report and if, as of right now, you might, you do notice on page one of that report, there's some of those COVID expenses at the bottom of about two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars and change. So we're still, we're still waiting for some of the invoices that we've sent to the town to be officially approved. And then once that happens, through that process, that's when the town will process that transfer. So that's still on the report, because not all of those transfers have, have taken place. So we hope that will happen in the very near future. And then that will even free up some more available funding. So I, I think we are in a good financial standing. I think we'll have some ability to make some decisions, hopefully, if, if there's no major surprises over the next six months as we approach the, the final quarter of the fiscal year. And I think there'll be a need to, to maybe do some things to, to help some of those revolving accounts, to not put us in a situation in subsequent years where we have to reduce any of the, the offsets that we've become used to. And then we'll have to look at what some of the other needs there may be. But I think, I think overall, despite everything that's been kind of thrown at us, we're in, we're in a pretty solid financial, financial standing. With that being said, I'll open it up to any other questions.
Thank you, Michael. I don't have any specific questions, but I just, you know, thank you for the guidance and leadership over this. I think a lot of districts are in a lot worse shape. I think you and, you know, Liz Rourke and, you know, Dr. Daley and Mike Gilberto did a great job of, you know, using the fund that were out there and a lot that, that is needed. And so you did a great job of, of using the fund that were available to us. And I think the revolving account is the one big concern that I still have. There are all the different revolving accounts, the bus contract, the solar project. But these are things we can talk about another meeting, not nine thirty at night. But, and I think, I think, I think you're right. That's the area that we're, we really have to look at as the year gets on a little bit more, about if we need to make any adjustments to any of those. But good job overall, everyone. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? I only see Dr. Daley's hand always raised. Staffing up, Dr. Daley?
Sorry, just wanted to share with you a few hires since the last time we've communicated here. We have Ms. Carmela Peak at the Bachelor School is, is a long-term substitute in the role of academic support teacher. It's, it's another internal position that she was able to rise into that new role, which is great. At the Hood School, we've hired a remote learning specialist, Joanne Leach. Little School, we hired a remote learning specialist, Megan D'Angelo. At the Middle School, we hired a remote learning specialist with Kathleen Kerwin, who was serving in our library. She did a great job filling in there and we were able to transition her to assist with our remote learning at the middle school. And then Ms. Linda Pescioni, who is a retired middle school math teacher, has come back to further assist at the middle school with Title I math. So at the district level, we've also hired David Barber to be a digital learning and I T support technician. So some critical positions COVID related that have really enhanced our program. And I just wanted to share those staffing updates this evening.
Thank you very much and welcome everybody to North Reading. Okay, bids and donations. I know we did two to start off, but we are fortunate to have even more. Mr. McGowan?
Yeah, I, you know, even, even some of these are, are, are just really generous and everyone is equally appreciated, although the ones from this early on were certainly of a surprising magnitude. Anyway, I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a generous donation of one thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars from the North Reading High School Lacrosse Boosters to be used for the girls lacrosse team at the high school.
I second.
Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, five zero, thank you.
And I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of eighty student headsets at thirty dollars each, valued at a total of two thousand four hundred dollars from the North Reading Trinity Evangelical Church to be distributed as needed by school principals to students at the North Reading Public Schools.
I second.
Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, five zero, thank you.
And I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a generous donation of one hundred and thirty eight dollars from the Black Bowed Giving Fund to be used to fund educational purposes at the North Reading Public Schools.
I second.
Any discussion on this?
Do we know what, do we have any information on the Black Bowed Giving Fund?
Dr. Daley, do you have any information or Michael?
Okay. I'm not really sure. I think, I think this was a check that we received and it was related to a, you know, an organization that, you know, I think just looks for, for charitable purposes or, so I'll, I'll have to maybe get a little more information on that. But I, I think it was related to a check. We had looked it up and it was a, an organization that I'd, through, I think, through some affiliations of either work that either some of our staff had done, had, had decided to make a donation.
Great.
One of the many Embriano Trust Funds, probably. Okay, do we have, did we have a motion in a second? Yes?
We did, yes.
Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote, Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Janine?
Hey.
Diana?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, five zero. I think that's it, right? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on, we have subcommittee updates. Policy Subcommittee met on December fourteenth. Janine and Chris want to give an update?
We pretty much did earlier. Everything that transpired was talked about at that meeting.
Well said. Okay, Finance Planning Team met on January eighth. Rich, you want to update on that or?
Yeah, sure, we got a good look at, a, a, a good look at a very, very preliminary revenue plan that seemed well, well presented, even though it's obviously very early. But overall, I think it was a good meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think two things that I remember were what Michael talked about, where we can spend the rest of the money if we need to over the next twelve months, which is really helpful when they tell you on the twenty ninth of the, of the year, of December twenty ninth, that you can take another year to do it. And then, you know, as you mentioned, the revenue plan. And I would just like to thank Mr. Gilberto and Liz Rourke, because, you know, frankly, in the past, there's been a lot of, you know, early drafts that didn't include certain things. And I feel like this year, we're sort of just moving forward pretty quickly and, you know, not doing a lot of back and forth. And so I, I appreciated that. And so that was good. Subcommittee schedule, Finance Planning Team has another meeting on February fifth at eight AM. Athletic Subcommittee, January twentieth at one PM. Fine Arts Subcommittee, January twentieth at three thirty PM. C I P C, I know Diana's favorite thing to do, January fourteenth at four PM. Administrative Report, Dr. Daley, do you have anything additional?
Just today. Just very quickly, I, and I just wanted to say also, it's not on the list, but we will have the Budget Subcommittee. I'll be in contact, we will come together soon. We haven't set a date yet, but it is, we are entering that season. So we do want to, to come together. I just wanted to very quickly share the, the website. I had shared this out with you, I just wanted to share it publicly. We did make a change and, you know, part of it is with the reorganization of our, our department. I do have four directors who, who work with me, two assistant superintendents and two directors. And so I, I changed a little bit here. I, I don't know how many folks would recognize it, but I did want to share it. The school committee and superintendent now have the same tab. I think you can see the screen here. And so we took the school committee information and put it on the left-hand side, including this link here, which is, if you click on School Committee Meeting Links and Recordings, that, that will bring you right to either the links for a meeting or also the recording. I would record tonight's, for example, and put it up there in the next few days so that folks can view it as well as view it on NOR Cam. And all of the superintendent information that was further, it used to be under District Administration, I now have here on this link. And what that allowed us to do is under District Administration, it allowed us to elevate digital learning and all of the, the important information that people are looking for. Prior to that, it fell under, under my link here, which formally it said Academic Services, but Mr. Colleen now with Teaching and Learning. And we're, we're still updating and changing some of that. But I just wanted to share that with the community, that we have made that update to reflect sort of the wider structure and to really elevate the digital learning from being a subset of, of Teaching and Learning to having its own space. I don't know if there were any comments or questions?
Nope, I think that's good. I think you deserve your own tab, though, Patrick.
Yeah. We had to keep it within a certain number of word limit, too, and it all worked out. It looks out, and it looks nice still, even on your mobile device, so.
Good. Excellent, any correspondence?
None at this time.
Okay, future business, do we want to set the dates for February and March or not?
I would, I would make that suggestion that we do that, and I don't know if anyone had a, but I do know that our student presenter has, has some challenges with Thursday, so I don't know if we want to do the Monday, February eighth date, if that works for folks?
That works for me. You know, Thursdays are substantially easier for me this, this next few months, but if they can't make it on Thursday night, then, then I can do Monday, and that's fine with me.
It does. Student or Chris?
Yeah, right, no, 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 it's a matter of, you know, one is better versus one can't, so I don't think there's a contest there.
So do we want to say, and, and Dr. Daley, is this just for the February meeting?
Yes, the student presenter switched next month, the twenty eighth, with the February meeting, so that she could, because Thursdays are difficult, so maybe if we do the February one on the Monday, and then go back to the Thursdays?
That works.
For March or February?
So then we're going to say that the upcoming meetings are Thursday, January twenty eighth at six thirty PM, February eighth at six thirty PM, and March fourth at six thirty PM.
Correct.
They will all be virtual unless otherwise notified, and I thought, I thought the presentation with high school actually went pretty well, even though it was virtual tonight, so.
Yeah, it was excellent, you did a great job.
Excellent, so if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do a vote on that, Rich?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Um.
I'll say hi.
I'm an eye as well, five zero, thank you, I know it was a long night, but I appreciate everybody, and appreciate the discussion, even if we're not always in agreement on things, you know, I think it's, you know, we can respectfully disagree or see things slightly differently, so.
Yep.
It'll see.
Okay, thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Because the high school is the best, so it's fine.